I'll second that motion.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the July 10, 2017 Monza County Court of Commissioners minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have all the houses with the combined courthouse update.
Aye, sir.
Morning.
Aye, sir.
Morning, sir.
Ma'am.
Can I clarify the...
Sign, the signing page?
Are you just clearing that out this morning or again? You didn't have any...
Here, I'll come over there. Go ahead, Monty.
First, since Commissioner, Road Department's here, I have forwarded those pictures on to the architects and Dennis said that he would look at those. He liked two of them. Two of them, he was like, "I don't want to put those out there right away." The old mixing barrel and then the one with the rubber tires.
Was he liked or didn't like?
Did not. But the old blade that still has the steel tires on it and then the other one that's all just... He said, "I think I'll be able to figure something, something out with those." So, that's in the works and as soon as he gives me something, then I'll pass that on to you guys. We had several meetings last week about Sam Proffer and emergency response and those guys are starting to walk through and get a feel for what belongs where and it was, it's a process. So, I've got another message into Sam this morning to see if I can get with him again. Essentially, it's these things that are being identified that are things that, they're not huge cost items, so don't want you to, you know, start worrying about that, but they're just little things that could have possibly been identified.
All right.
Yes, sir. And now that they can see walls and see doors and see things and it seems as though, and Dennis actually sent me an email last week and said, you know, "We need to maybe sit down with Sam again." So, I got a call in to him because it seems though every time he walks through with a different group, they come up with a different punch list and at some point, I need to put an end to that and get exactly what he wants and make sure that we're compliant, obviously with everything. But then, we just have to get to a point where we don't parade everyone through because everyone's going to see something different and as long as we're in compliance.
I understand.
Exactly. So, I have a meeting with Sam to talk about that and also called Eric and that was him calling me back. I apologize for that just to say, because Eric, at the end of the day, it's Eric's cra- I mean, we have to be compliant, but you know, Eric was very instrumental in 22nd District. I don't know if you guys remember, but a year and a half ago, we went through a big ordeal with crash bars and egress and degress and that's what held up our permitting for so long was getting all of that exactly the way that the city wanted it.
Yeah.
Well, here we are again and everything was drawn and then put in there and so, we're just trying to get through this and it's something that, and Dennis is way more politically correct than I am and he said, "You know, we have to be compliant. We'll make sure that we do the things that are necessary." And it just, it just becomes tiring at some point.
Is there, is there a reason behind all of this? Does Sam have some...
Yes, sir. I mean, we have to have, for our certificate of occupancy, I think that Sam is...
I understand that, but why in the plans, when those plans were reviewed and approved and submitted and constructed, why now, why now are we seeing all these defugables? If we've got plans that were approved and submitted and reviewed by their engineers and by Sam and...
Which is part of our, my frustration, but we'll get work through it and I think at the end of the day, Sam wants to, the city wants to make sure that all the emergency response guys are satisfied with what they have and how to deal with it. I know that he is going above and beyond just to make sure that he is, I feel as though he is. I say, "I know, I don't know anything." He wants to make sure that everyone's voice is heard, which I understand and we're trying to be complicit to some degree in making sure that everyone's voice is heard, everyone has a voice at the table. And if we can do these things and it's not a huge impact to us, then that's the exercise we're in now is to try and make sure that everyone's voice is heard because I feel comfortable that we are compliant within the code and Dennis does too and Sophie.
Then, then those voices may need to be stifled a bit. I mean, that's not their building and if it's in compliance with the regulations for NFPA and whatever fire...
ADA and everything.
And all of that, then...
Yes, sir.
I think maybe those voices need to be heard somewhere else.
Yes, sir. And, and I don't disagree with that, but it is my hope to continue working with them and give everyone a voice at the table and not to impact our project. And that's what I'm trying to do currently and that's what...
Well, I'm much better at that than I was before, Monty.
Well, I don't know about that, but I am trying. The other little issue that came up, I say issue, the special inspections and the testing, material testing is running a little over budget. You know, we still have contingency in there, so it is what it is, but it is running over budget about $6,000. They had provide us an estimate from $58,000 to $75,000, about a $19,000 window and they have now to that and exceeded it and they think they're going to be somewhere $3,000 to $6,000 over their budget of $75,000. And Melissa and I went back and forth with them some last week and then, of course, I dealt with them again some. Long story short, they have a list of reasons why they're over budget. Some of it is inclement weather that we dealt with as far as early in the year trying to get compaction. So, they were out there more than they thought they would be trying to achieve compaction.
Can you give an example? Is that James?
No, sir. It's John Butler with...
Oh, they did the drilling?
Well, with Troutner.
Troutner.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The same company did our drilling, but they also are the ones that are doing our material testing and our special inspections. So, the material testing, piece of that is because of inclement weather and achieving compaction. So, there's, they've outlined why they think that's a piece of it. Now, we don't know where all this is going to fall just yet. I'm just keeping you apprised of this. And then, another piece of it was the blasting, you know, the over blasting. So, there was considerably more fill to compact and test than what they had originally thought. So, Troutner's coming in and that's under our special inspections and our material testing, which was in our soft cost budget.
But the material testing, that, so we're, are we mainly talking about compaction and dirt and gravel?
Almost all of it. Compaction, dirt, gravel, concrete testing. That is what it is. You know, we had so many pours, so they're breaking their cylinders for that. Asphalt testing, that is what it is. They knew how many square feet of asphalt we'd have to have. So, they test that material. They test the concrete as far as the material. It's the achieving compaction and the extra compaction requirements because of some of the over explosions. So, I'm working on that. James is working on that. Everyone's kind of up to...
Do you know what the cost was for the paving, the total cost?
For the material testing on the paving piece alone?
No, what it cost for it to pave it.
I could get that line, line.
I'd like to compare what it cost actually paved it compared to how much it actually costed testing.
Oh, the testing.
Percentage.
Right, testing.
Because they take a little machine out there. We see them do it on the highway all the time, that little yellow machine and...
Right.
I mean, if it's 10% of the paving, that would seem...
And there's still a little bit of material testing. The conversation that I had with Dennis was, I mean, there's still some material testing for some sidewalk yet to be replaced. And then, there's still a little material testing for the asphalt that's going to be placed that comes in from the back and goes up to the dumpsters. So, there's not a whole bunch left, but there is some and I asked, you know, I asked Dennis, I said, "Damn, how important it is that we get concrete breaks for sidewalks?" And he disagreed with me on the importance of it, but nevertheless, there's a few pieces of the material testing that yet to be done. And they're estimating at this point to be $3,000 to $6,000 over their estimate was the latest information that I have. About $5,900 is what they're thinking. So...
We make them justify that.
Oh, yes, sir. I got them just finding it and dealing with that and so, that's that piece. And beyond that, Dennis was out last week and started walking through and developing preliminary punch list. There was nothing yet that could be punched out, even the roof because of snow shield. We still couldn't punch that out, but the punch list is starting to, to come around and be developed. Dennis was pleased with his walkthrough, thought things were coming along nicely. It's just finishing and there's a lot of trades over there right now. There's everything from, from painters to carpenters to mechanical guys, trim people. I mean, everybody's over there now. So, it's just the push to the finish. There's been no schedule adjustments. I talked to Jeremiah late last week. He feels comfortable that, you know, even though they're going to push hard, they have to push hard, that they'll still be able to get their certificate of occupancy and turn it over on their 22nd or 4th of August or whatever that number is.
A month out.
A little more than a month out and just press on now. So...
Any other, any other questions, Commissioners?
How's the roof doing now? Did they get a big rain yesterday? Did they get a big rain?
Man, leaked everywhere, but we got it. We caulked it up. We put some caulk up there. No, that's the, that's the good...
Thanks, Monty.
So, now that we're dried in, I mean, these, all these trades are, I mean, obviously we've been dried in for a long time. These trades are just going at it and the weather's not really an issue anymore. You know, still, there's some of that site work in the back along where the office trailer used to be, but that's coming along nicely. But the trades should not be impacted by weather or anything at this point. So...
When will the landscaping start?
That will be, well, they've already started coming out and seeing where they could start prepping and understanding what they have to work with, but that'll be starting in the next week or so and it'll go...
Who's doing that? Is it a local outfit?
I could find out. I'll find out exactly who his contractor is for landscaping. And then, the gentleman from Yellow Jacket has finally gotten a hold of Jeremiah and has come out to the location and looked and understood what we're asking of him and he's yet to provide us numbers, but he has been out on location and he has started looking at that. Yellow Jacket Solar. Spot some of my report.
All right, take it, Monty.
Keep that big whip out, man.
Yes, sir. I think we're in good shape and it's always hard to finish. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Monty.
Yes, sir.
All right, at this time, we will have public comment. If you would like to make a comment to the Court of Commissioners, please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Dexter Gill, 20601, Road 22, Lewis. Just want to take a few moments to let you know that your road department's doing a pretty good job out in my opinion. For the first time in my known history, they're pulling the ditches and re-crowning roads and reclaiming some of the gravel that's on the sides and so things can be maintained and properly maintained instead of waiting for a repair job. Doing a good job out there and they're doing really good at it too. So, I want to thank them because they're, it's needed a long time, at least on my road. I don't know what your road's doing.
They did ours last summer.
Yeah, that's probably good. They're doing a good job. Thank them.
Thank you, Dexter. Would anybody else like to comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go to Rob Binglehart, the road supervisor for...
That was quite a lead-in for Rob, wasn't it?
I know.
Nice lead-in, Dex.
There's a reason I sat in back.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Morning, Rob.
How'd the wedding go, man? Did you get it pulled off?
We did.
Yeah.
Did it rain, Don?
No.
It got within 100 yards of it.
You're living right, buddy.
Yeah, it was, it really turned out to be a nice wedding. It was really pretty and it was beautiful. You needed it.
Yeah, they said you had your place looking really pretty out there.
Well, it looked like a three-ring circus.
Yeah.
But thanks for asking. Yeah, it was a beautiful wedding.
Well, good.
Well, I did, that was one thing I was wondering if I remember to send that over. Okay, on the schedule. Last week was a preparatory work on that transfer of Road 42, combined effort we're doing for the Forest Service up there, a few transfer parts. It's bladed and rolled and we put a little bit of gravel on to sweeten up some thin areas that had gotten beaten off over the last couple of years and we're ready to go. So...
Did you find a water source after?
We're just getting it out of the river. It just took an extra couple of water trucks. But, you know, honestly, keen in the rain came and now is our worst enemy, but was our best friend last year.
Best friend last year.
You know, and it got us where we could do it and the road is driving excellent. We've got a good crown on it and it's going to be a good effort. So, I think it's going to be good for the community and the relationships with us and the Forest Service working towards that bridge to get more projects like this completed the way they like to do things with their, with their grants and their funds. So, it's going to work good.
It will be.
So, away we go on that one. So, next week, if all goes well, we'll start, we'll start on the 24th with Chip Seal. This week, we've got some work over here on this, out here west of the cell barn that we're going to work on, get them, start getting them ready. Again, we don't want to get too far in front of it because then we just got to do it again.
Yeah, do it again, yeah.
So, we got a little balancing act to do here. We're going to put a couple culverts in that we got a call on over the last week or two, some access culverts. We're going to get those done, just tidying up, going through our permits and making sure all the water lines and all the utility taps are in place and everything's working good with Monza Water and all that. We're doing good. So, away we go. So, it'll, it'll be a real focus this week on just fine tuning and getting all the roads ready to go. Pleasantly the same way. We're, we're good. We've got it roughed in. We'll put the blade and the roller out there right in front of the Chip Seal crew, but everything's good to go. We're just waiting for Rod to call, man. Just normal conversation, just like every year.
Yeah, yeah. Ready for the oil, man.
Yeah, that's it. So, I think we're ready to go on all that. We are doing our, the Dolores crew is, they are up on the mountain and they're working their way down out of Barlow and all that country up in there where we have our county road, I mean, our Schedule A agreements with the Forest Service. So, they're working their way out. Mankas is done. They're checked in and all signed off and then Dolores is, by the end of the week, should be pretty close. So...
That's good. You know, have them all cleaned up.
Did you say Barlow?
Well...
That's Dolores.
Well, ours, we have some up there with the Forest Service.
Oh, up higher.
In our Schedule A agreements, you know, what I'm saying. And you're right, that is. But with their Schedule A agreements, they connect to road to road and so we pick up them chunks.
Yeah, Barlow goes back, back to west.
Right, and then Dolores takes care of some of ours out behind the dam and down below there in a, in a trade-off right there. So, that's how we kind of worked that out. But in, in the three years, well, this will be the fourth year and now third year for full-time, but this is the first time we're doing some roads here and getting them completed. We're actually doing roads that are on our list that were always just kind of skipped over or blew on by them or whatever. We're just, we're catching up and it's taken some extra work, but we're having some time to get it done. Rains are hitting good and we're getting some moisture up there.
Does that go into that campground?
I'm not sure. You know, I've got them all on a piece of paper, but I've never drove them to go see just what they do. The guys just know what they're doing and that's where they're at.
That's quite a campground up there, I think.
Barlow Creek.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it, it's good. I mean, it's, it's good. It's a good agreement. I think it comes up next year for renewal and we can make adjustments in there if we want to, but right now, I think we're holding up our end of the bargain and that's what the goal was. So... So, they're working on that. Then, the trucks, last week, they hauled some gravel out to 23. We've got that raise we're doing out there on Road 23 north of there. We hauled it out of Ormiston. They're back out there again today. We should wrap up the inch and a half out of Ormiston, raising that grade through there.
You're grading up out of that.
Right. And then on down over the hill, we got another bad spot that we knew from last winter. We're raising the grade on that and then we'll either try to haul some three-quarter out there this week or wait till after Chip Seal, let it set in a little bit. So, it's going to be a little bit of rough riding, but it would, I would prefer to wait for Randy to get moved and take it out of hay camp. It's a closer haul. But if time allows and we have to, we'll go out down to McCabell. We still got enough down there. We can go out and cap it with that. But we won't cap it with Ormiston gravel because we don't want to unravel on it.
You want some of that PI in it.
Yep. So, that's kind of the plan. So, we got some of the equipment moved last week for the Chip Seal. We've showed, moving the Chip Seal over later this week on the 20th. Although, we're ahead of schedule on that. A lot of that equipment got moved last week, so we're in good shape there. And then, again, with truck drivers and everybody, it's all hands-on deck then and try to get all that done up through there. So, Crusher, we are moving it. We're running today, but then tomorrow, I'll put all the trucks out there and we'll try to get it all moved in one day and then he'll set up. And I'm hoping to have him in production by the 25th or 26th and back in making some gravel hay camp. So, because we are out at hay camp now. So, we got to get some made in there. So, it's been a big pull on that, that crew, you know, with the Dola work, two years in a row and then the work we're doing, we've hammered that. We just were out. So, come budget time, we may discuss doing some, having some custom crushing done. Resupply these pits, get them back up. That or buy more equipment. I don't think I want to do that.
Is the overburden already pushed when he went back to hay camp?
No, we got the dose removed last week and he's going to start today. So, we're moving some of that back and getting ready to go. So, I think when Randy gets moved in this week and next week early, it'll be pretty much instant production. Away we go.
As soon as he's set up, he'll be ready to crush.
Get some tests run on it and see where we're at with kicking out some of that. We're kind of getting out on that point and our clay factors are coming up a little higher. And so, we may have to do some pre-screening and get rid of some of them naturals and kick them back, get that clay back down where we want it. Because this is our source for Chip Seal. We don't want a bunch of clay in this gravel. So, we got that at Mankas.
Have you ever made Ormiston chips? Do you do chips out of Ormiston?
We will do, we did, they did years ago for Road 10, Tohoven Week and we will use Ormiston chips this year on Road CC and Road 10. So, yep.
Hay camp's kind of though, like if you get into the red is the PI and then if you get into the white face, it's less PI.
Less, less. So, you're right. And then, we kind of judge that. When we're into certain places, we'll kick some out. When we're into other places, we'll bring it in, you know, to keep it. But we like to keep that PI on the low side of what CDOT does. It gives us better drainage, it less swell and make the Chip Seal and lets the Chip Seal stick and it don't slide. And so, that is an important pit to us to make sure we have it right because that's our, that's our main one to get all these, these Chip Seal roads done. So...
Talking about heaving as well, did you and Four Corners get to look at 25 Road?
Yeah, we did. We went out and looked at it, yeah. Of course, it's...
Do they know what happened? Do we know what happened?
Yes, it's our fault, of course.
It's somebody else's fault, right?
It's always our fault, you know. But that's what contractor's first line is. Well, what'd you do wrong, you know? I know because I've used it before.
You've been on the other side of the eleven road.
We're pretty good at that, actually. So, no, we discussed it. We've got two issues there and it was on my list to talk about, so we'll just go into it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It's okay. No problem. L and 25 have a drainage issue there with a dip. So, we were looking at that and while we were there looking at it, we were already seeing the heavy loads like the mixer trucks as they roll up to the stop sign and starting this wavy rumble.
Yeah.
Which isn't necessarily subgrade problem. Could be mix problems, could be temperature problems, could be a lot of problems. Could be, it's only a three-inch mat with...
And you have that kind of weight and that kind, you know, there's a lot of things.
Is the, is it coming off of Road L or is it coming off, is it on 25?
It's on 25, the new asphalt. Okay, and the trucks will pull up to the stop sign to go east or west or just even north on 25 and they roll up to the stop sign and you see this developing. You know, and the stop signs, stop signs are notorious for this.
Oh, yeah.
Anytime you put a stop sign, you got pushing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'm not in a, I'm not in a position right now to want to go down through there, take all the stop signs off of Road 25 because it helps keep the speeds down and keep safe and all that. But that is what causes them rumbles is then heavy loads come rolling in and it just starts pushing. So, we've got an issue there. We need to fix that east-west gutter that was developed or created when we put that asphalt on. There's a kind of a dip there and a high spot in the middle of 25. And that's what we were there for is to look at that. And then, I can see we're probably going to have to pull that up again, do a little bit of drainage repair or drainage issues there and then relay that so we don't have such a dip.
And you're on that damn shale, that shale.
And that's, that's kind of on us, that one there. That was probably a lack of knowing exactly what we were going to end up with there by just paving the road. So... But the other one, the one you brought up is, is my opinion, and I think they're probably in agreeance. They may not like it, but it was, they were paving in the rain and I think it got wet and trapped moisture in it. That first 50 feet's going to have to be pulled up and repaired and repaved.
Where's that at?
Right at the end of the city limits.
Right at the end where you're coming up and it's only one lane. The other lane's fine. It's only that west lane.
And that was the one that paved after the rain. You know, it rained an inch that week and so...
And it's coming up?
It's, it's getting, it's getting...
It's collapsing.
And collapsing and getting, getting roughened.
And none of the rest of the road is doing that. So, that's a good sign. And that's not a historical place for a problem. That's never been a problem. It's not in a...
Coming off kind of that little rise there and you're, it shouldn't be a...
Sometimes things just don't go the way they want. So, we're going to have to get it fixed. I think Four Corners, I, I don't think, I know, they're going to stand up to this and we'll get, we'll get it worked out. And then, up at Road T and 25 where the school, Lemon's School is, there, that's a bad one because it just breaks straight down the hill. And there's a little driveway there that kicks back to the south immediately in that intersection. So, the Dolores crew is over there fixing that driveway today. They're going to build that approach up a little bit and I'm getting a price from Four Corners to take their paper while they're in there doing these, these little pavement jobs like the annex building and all this. Go fix that one for us and put a 60-foot approach on it and put a radius and come off there. So, because right now, you're coming off about a three-inch drop-off onto the gravel and it's just, you know, it's just steep and it's hard for the cars getting it out of there. So, it's, it'll be a move some money in the budget around. Don't buy something or do something, but we've got to get that fixed. That's not a good deal there. So, so while we're doing all this, we're trying to put a plan together. We take care of all these at the same time. L and 25 may be a little more difficult. That's just a can of worms with utilities in there, you know, and it's just going to be tough to put a culvert in that's never been there. It was always graded to drain different directions, but we see a need for a culvert there. We see a need to beef it up with these heavy loads. It's, that one may take a little while to redesign and do it right, you know, and put some thought into that one. So, but we'll get there. But that's, that is the one thing about that stop sign. It does have all those mixer trucks and Road L is kind of a commercial road anymore.
It is. I'll tell you what, there's a lot of traffic going across.
Belly dumps, after belly dumps, after belly dumps are going through there, of course, for 491 and you know, it's just...
Well, you got D and L Construction over there on it. I mean, you've got all kinds of commercial traffic on that road.
It's, it is a tough one. So...
So's M.
M, but we built it. You know, we got that intersection built up. Yeah, we built it up.
I mean, the whole road, that's their cutoff.
Oh, it is.
From 491 to 145.
Yeah, and I think in the near future, we'll be discussing which roads get rebuilt. Well, M will be high on the list to go in, grind it up and start all over again. Absolutely. Absolutely.
It's always a process, ain't it?
We're never going to, we're never going to be out of work.
No, you're never going to be out of work.
Thicker asphalt at those intersections like that.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the ideas we're talking about, James, at Road L is to actually double that thickness, go from three inches to six inches on the tapered approach and build that up so we have more structural strength in those areas. Because the gravel was good. It was good gravel and we did, we did put some more gravel on it, but I just think them heavy loads and that. I mean, the best thing to do is take a stop sign out. Don't let them stop. But you know, even the mixer trucks are going to slow down to make that right turn to get back to the planned.
What about concrete? What's like concrete to transition to asphalt?
Concrete's good. It'll, it can crack and break up, but it's good, you know, but it's very expensive, you know. By the time you go in and you rebar it, because you're going to want to rebar now. It would be a, it would be a good way to fix it.
So, it'd be quite a bit more money?
Oh, oh, yeah. A lot of money. It'd be a lot of money to do that. So, but it would work. Yeah. So...
Someday, some way, yeah.
Maybe, yeah. Paint striping got done on the weekend. They got a call, they were working in Montrose and they could, got rain over there, so they canceled out and come down Thursday and so they got CC painted, striped. Did it look good? Because I haven't seen it yet. I was kind of busy. Good, good.
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
Good.
That brings up, while we're talking about that, they still haven't moved the Hoven Week signs off of BB.
That's something that I, me and the Park Service were talking about and they were working that out with CDOT to do that and I'm hoping that'll happen now. But I've been kind of hesitant to get that moved until I get Chip Seal done.
Yeah.
You know, until I get 10 and CC completed before I start really moving a lot of traffic in there. Although, we could do it. We could, you know, just divert them around with road closures and all that while we're Chip Sealing. But I kind of let that be with the park and CDOT at this point. Now, I'll get back into it and more because we've, we've already committed with the park to move the signs out there in the county.
The Lowry signs, was that, was that Lowry sign always there?
It's always there.
It's always been there, yeah.
I just know that if it's safety, safety, safety and then they leave the signs there.
Well, lay it on. I think it's coming. I don't think there's an issue there. I've talked into the Park Service. They were, we had great conversations with CDOT. I don't think there's an issue, at least that I've heard of. I think it's just, they're waiting I don't think there's an issue, at least that I've heard of. I think it's just, they're waiting on me to get done with mine before we really vary everybody around. So.
Nothing to change, so I wouldn't fix.
C, 33 Marion, 34 got paint striped. So it's done. You were asking about that a couple of weeks ago. It got done this weekend. And then also five miles of road G. So they had a good day of painting and knocked out a lot of miles of road first. So. They should be going down today to, if all goes according to what I heard planned over the weekend was Tammy Spencer was going to haul that gravel for Habitat for Humanity today. So I believe that'll happen today. If not, maybe tomorrow. So I think everybody got finally organized on all that.
Finally got all that coordinated for, good for everybody.
Does she live up there, doesn't she live up there on the Jackson Road? Does she have a pond there? Doesn't she have irrigation there?
She didn't mention anything. I didn't ask her. I didn't have to ask her.
Well, I just, I was thinking about the water situation and I remembered her living right there and I didn't know if she had any water or not.
Well, we were talking about the water issue. She didn't offer me any. Yeah. And then I guess the last thing I've got really today is that we're about ready to start this chip sealing. One of our number one foremans is leaving for the next 10 days to go baseball. So this is a congratulatory remark to the baseball team, the senior league, Cortez Senior League, our state champions. And they're headed for Supremum Texas to play Louisiana. And they have all the aspirations of the world of watching them on TV in the World Series here about the weekend too. So.
Pretty good ball club.
They're a very strong ball club. So my congratulations to their team and the coaches and Brett Likes. And took my lead man.
Oh, Brett Likes?
Yeah, he's, he's one of their head coaches. And so they're going on this World Series trip to, World Series, but national.
Yeah, national championships. Yeah.
But yeah, congratulations to them and their team and their boys. They're a good bunch of boys. So.
So you'd be, somebody fill in for him? I was actually thinking.
I'm getting down to commissioners, man. We'll, we'll figure it out. We'll, we'll, yeah. So, another note, that's about it. So.
Sounds good, man. Sounds good.
No, we're moving on. I don't have anything else. You guys?
You know, one issue to think about that I spoke with Rob about real briefly is the Summit Lake subdivision, the road up there. One of the residents was, was asking about what we plan to do if we do make those green roads as far as maintenance goes. Uh, because right now apparently they may do some, you know, put in some of their own money for, for the maintenance up there. They're not, I don't think incredibly well maintained, but maybe they maintain it somewhat. And if we change it to green roads, they asked us what our intent would be. And I said, I didn't know what our intent would be, but come to our public hearing.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think didn't we discuss it would be a green road, but a non-maintained road, which basically shows public access, but.
Right.
Until.
I don't know with deterioration or, or you know, how, how much Rob wants to, to maintain it once a year maybe. Uh, versus, versus what it needs, if that's sufficient. Cause they would then stop maintaining it.
Didn't we get a, I thought we got a letter from somebody up there. My, my thought was, what I thought he was talking about was the crossroads between 36.5 and 39. That are red roads at the moment. And I was, I thought he was wanting those to be green.
Everything? I don't, I don't recall seeing the letter. I don't know. Did we get it in like this, this week's pack of materials? Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I saw that letter.
I, I seen it. He said it.
Maybe, you know, that Rob see it too. Just see what the concerns are.
We can, we can forward it on to you. But anyway, what's your, what is your feelings about that?
Well, that's, that's a, we have a lot of green roads that are secondary roads that are non-maintained. Road 41 down Weber Canyon is a good example of one of those. We go in and blade it once a year. It's very narrow, very rough. And we offer them the ability to get gravel from time to time. That, that would help, you know, they can come haul their own gravel. We'll supply gravel to a green road. We don't, excuse me, we don't necessarily lay it down, spread it or take care of it for them. But you know, we've done that out there on road AA and a couple of different places for some folks. And I think that helps. And the roads are not even close to being to standard. I'll tell you that. I drove them. And why the whole subdivision is involved in this is your decision. But none of them are up to standard. None of them. So to me to go in and take care of them and do it the way we normally do our roads would take a lot of our resources and money to get them upgraded to that point, you know. Now for us to go rough blade them once a year or let them haul gravel into them, um, what is that road 24, we call it Skinwalker Lane, 24 and P. You know, those people did a marvelous job. They come in, met with you, we agreed to let them have the gravel out of the pit. They did a great job. They kept the road about 12, 14 feet wide. They're happy campers, you know, they're able to self-maintain. And that is something we do, you know, without getting us too involved in any of it.
And since it's the backcountry horsemen that are pushing that parking lot, maybe in the future, they would come up with, with funding or a way to. I think as, as early in the stage it is that we, in the public hearing, do make it the green, that we just kind of just leave it like you're saying. And.
Blade it once a year.
Yeah. And tell.
We don't.
Start with being 100 people a day going up there, then maybe something changes. But I don't see nothing like that happening anytime soon.
I think, I think what'll happen is as they turn green, people will start expecting like snow removal to start happening. That doesn't, you know, it's just, it's just, it's a secondary green road. I'm not saying it can't get to that point, but for us to go in and file these roads, we'd have to do some improvements and get it widened out where we can get in, get turned around. And it's just not in my budget right at the point to do that kind of stuff.
That, that is a perfect thing to state at the public hearing.
And, and also the developer, at the time he did that subdivision, that development up there, if he wanted it to be a county road, it would have behooved him to build it to county road standards. To, to make that, even though he left it public, it's a public road, but he did not choose to make it up to county standards. And so part of that falls back on that developer.
And the road, there's 36 points, there's 35.91 that goes to the deal. And then go further east about a half mile or whatever. There's another that kicks north.
Right.
That's nothing but a little two track, three inch gravel road. Yeah. I mean, that's, I got dirt roads that are better than that.
When, when is that public hearing?
I think it's next week.
Next week. So, so from, so from the road department standpoint, that's where I'm at with that. You know, it's, it's, it could be a secondary road.
Yeah.
And then, and then there's the liability stuff. And I think if you make it a primary road, I, I don't know how to quote the law on this. But talking to Stephen Allen on a couple of occasions, if you choose to go out on a full-fledged county road, do your own blading, do your own shouldering, do your own snow removal. You're opening yourself up to quite a liability. Because we are the road. If we gouge it, it causes a wreck. We're a part of the road. It's just part of life. If you gouge it, say you took your tractor out there or your skister and did it, you could probably lose the farm on a lawsuit.
Or doing damage in a road and causing.
And causing accident. Yeah. And so through Stephen Allen's advice on that, that slowed down some people that were doing that last winter. And I said, you're liable. If you want to do it, go ahead.
Is there a way to take away that liability?
Put it on us. We contract with them, maybe.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. That's a good point.
Well, I'm just thinking about, you know, up on the Forest Service, that Colback Construction blades that are blades of snow put for Kinder Morgan on, on that road. There's got to be some other examples.
They probably have a contract, I'm sure they do with the Forest Service, to contract it out. And that's a different kind of a situation. But as a resident to just willfully go out and get mad at the road department because we didn't get there on Monday morning like we should have and start doing things. Could cause some severe lawsuits, you know, because they're not the county road. They're actually, I don't call trespassing, but they're certainly not doing themselves any favor for the wreck. They caused a wreck, they could cause a lawsuit.
They're the ones who are exposed on us.
Right. So based on a secondary road, you see this all the time. You apply your own roads, you got to take care of your own business on a secondary status. I think some of that liability might not be there. And I'm, I'd defer to the attorney on this one too. On a primary road where we are doing the maintenance, that's different. So, so we want to caution our, use caution on that kind of deal. So. Anyway.
Have you any plans for 15.5 this year?
Yes, sir. It's going to be later. We're still on the list. We're checking them off. We're getting there. Yeah. We're going to try to get in there this fall or late summer and get some dirt on that shelf rock and get that work capacity there. Unfortunately, I probably won't make it by wheat season, but we're working towards something getting done this year. Yeah. So.
You're going so fast and that is really good. And you was talking about maybe having to hire somebody to come in and crush. How much would that cost? And would that be something that needs to be done this year or next year?
It would, if, if I could do it this year, I would do it this year simply because we could do it in the fall and before winter. Cause where I want to do it would be the Mankas pit. You know, I could go in, make 40,000 ton there and that'd take care of us for quite a while. And that would take, that would take the pressure off our crusher for McCallmore and Hay Camp. So it would be a budget adjustment to take care of it. And they haven't gave me a number yet, Lord, but you're looking in the neighborhood of probably 85, 90,000 bucks for 40,000 tons of gravel under a contract crushing.
And if, if you think it's a priority, should we try to move forward to, to do that?
We may be talking about it here in the next couple of weeks, you know, because the, the, the weather is in our favor this time of year. It's raining right now. It's not real good, but it's a lot better than the winter. And that's a tough pit because of the clay in it. So we want to try and do it when it's dry, not when it's wet.
We like the momentum and so does the public. We don't want it to slow down.
That's what, that's what Randy said. He says, I'm glad you're chip sealing this so I can catch up. I said, Randy, you're never going to catch up. I told you I'd catch you and I had to do something to get you caught up again.
You're going to wear that thing out, buddy.
And, and we talked to crushers, you know, you could buy a bigger cone crusher. Well, then you need a bigger screen and then you need bigger conveyors. It's just a domino effect. And at what point do you say, I'm not going to spend a half a million dollars or three quarters of a million dollars on upgrading equipment? When all I need to spend is $90,000 on outside crushing. Just to get caught up again. We may not get another Dole contract for years. And that's what depleted us. It wasn't the fact that our county trucks were hauling it faster. It's, you know, you got 18 trucks last year hauling out of Hay Camp and you got 16 or more this year hauling out of ormiston. And it's just, you know.
Moved a lot of gravel.
We moved a lot of gravel. You know, one day last month, that was about three weeks ago, county, not county by itself, but county projects hauled 4,000 ton in one day. That's a lot of gravel. You know, that's a lot of gravel. Now, we had contractors working over here and we were over here in different pits. But as a combined effort that day, we hauled a little over 4,000 ton. So add that up over 10 days, 40,000 ton. Boom. You know, so.
You can empty out, you can empty out a stockpile, put that gun quick.
Yes, sir. We make Randy spin in circles. Yes. Yeah. So. You know, it is great. It is, it is what we wanted, you know, to get this stuff and make some, make some advancements in our.
Make a difference in our road system. Yeah.
So anyway, we're busy. If it don't rain, we'll be chip sealing Monday.
There you go.
Thank you, Rob. I see we have 15 minutes before our next appointment. Does, John, do you have anything that you'd like to discuss now or do we need to wait?
We might bring this back up. But Leslie Bug, our county assessor, let me give you all these. You can pass them all the way around. Gave us a memo asking us to basically allow her to resend notices out later. And for the time being, set all our values back to January 1st of 2017. Right. I hope that's the right date she put in there that she was asking.
January 1 of 2017.
Right, right. So she, I, I told her that we'd invite her over this afternoon to discuss that, what she's asking for. We do have the authority to do that. I mean, I worked with her on this. Um, just because she was worried that all of our values might be off. And so I think we'll invite her over this afternoon and discuss what we want to do as far as that goes. The, the Kinder Morgan at the Board of Assessment Appeals, uh, those, those years, 2009, 2010 are now set for February 12th, I think. Of next year. So they just gave me notice of that last week. Um, if you all recall, I'd reached out to their attorney, Mr. Poe in Denver. And he hadn't responded back to me last week when I reported on that. So I shot him another email and said, hey, let me know. Can you confirm that you're getting my communications? And he just shot me a quick email back saying that he's getting them. He'll respond to me this week. And so, I mean, essentially I'll talk to him and see whether or not we can work this thing out and not have those hearings in February. Otherwise we'll have those hearings in February. We, we received a long time ago, notice that we might get sued for a car accident. That a district attorney's office employee got into with somebody on the name. Um, and they did file suit. So we got the complaint filed on that. The accident was a while ago. I don't remember when it was. Let me see. 2014, it looks like the accident was.
So how's that work? Who defends the district attorney's office?
Our insurance company already had it when we, we gave them notice, when we got notice that they might sue. I guess that their statute of limitations hadn't, hasn't run, but I'm not sure. And we'll have to, of course, be on top of that. Uh, they have to give us notice within six months. And they, they did that within six months of the 2014 date. And then apparently they just filed suit. The insurance company contacted me. I've got a phone conversation set up with him for tomorrow at nine, um, to see where we go with it. But, um, that's getting rolling basically for, she claimed.
Was there a citation issued? And was that apparently against the district attorney?
Employee. And, and she's claiming, uh, severe and permanent injuries to her body, including limitation of her limbs, injuries to her brain, neck, head, shoulders, wrist, foot, back and elbow. And she want, you know, medical treatment and things like that. They asked for $350,000 in the, in the complaint. Um, so we'll see where that goes. They, they just filed the complaint. That's it. We, the, we haven't responded back yet. Um, we will and then see where that goes.
Do you do that with the insurance?
The insurance company already has it and is doing it. I just consult with them.
They will keep you apprised if they decide to make any kind of a settlement outside of.
Yeah. I'll remind them that you all want to definitely have final say in it. And so this, this was the first time he reached out to me. It was last week. And so that's why we set up the meeting for tomorrow, just to discuss it. I think that's it. We gave, we gave Monty Giles the addendum last week, I think on Tuesday or Wednesday. And, uh, I asked him to get it back to Melissa. I just emailed her. I don't know if he got it back to her yet or not, but that short addendum.
Oh, for his contract?
Yeah. So I'll follow up with hers to make sure that, you know, that thing's finalized.
Okay. Do you think that about covers it until this afternoon?
Sorry?
Does that about cover it until this afternoon?
Yeah.
All right. Melissa?
Clear your part. We're good. Everything's good.
Commissioners, Commissioner, tell.
I had a couple of meetings last week. I had a AAA area agency on aging, uh, meeting in Durango with our lead, uh, lead supervisor over there and, uh, had a pleasant surprise. The federal government, uh, gave them $76,000. That was unsuspected and planned for. So all of the different agencies are going to benefit from that, but they seem to be running good. And then on Thursday, I had a, a workforce consortium board meeting in, in Durango as well. Employment, I, we heard a bad thing from a gentleman there that's part of that from Crossfire Construction Company and, and, uh, layoff, there are tons of layoffs in the oil and gas. And I guess there's, there's one of the ladies there, her husband had just been laid off, not from Crossfire, but from another company. And he said that he beat British Petroleum over in the Durango San Juan Basin area is finding on some major layoffs. And so there's going to be, uh.
It's still to come.
Still to come. Yeah, they're still to come. So the oil and gas industry is taking it harder. And I think farming, there are going to be a lot of people see. Use of caution from that, that sort of activity. So.
There's quite a few people that live in Mazinacay and that work over there by the airport of that BP.
So oil and gas affects a lot of things in our, our area. So job, job outlook is not all that wonderful for, for, for that industry. So that's all I had.
Commissioner Lambert?
I had two meetings. One was Southwest Basin Roundtable. And they had some good news. Like here it is. They, they have been real concerned because they got their money from sever stacks to the northeast end. But the state came through with a, um, a little over a million dollars to go to different roundtables. And this one got a hundred and. And this one got a hundred and thirty thousand. So let's put their bank account is back up where they can do some, do some things with it. They had an interesting presentation from the, and I can't remember the name of the organization, but it's, I fit out a Telluride. The roundtable funded part of their rebuilding, so to speak, of that river bottom from Telluride down toward Passerelle. And she gave a film presentation of what they did, how they did it, and this type of thing. It was quite interesting. Mike Preston said that he had gone up there to see it. And he says, you cannot tell that that river wasn't where it's at, been there for a hundred years. But what they've done is they're not trying to channel the river to keep it in any one place, but they're trying to fix it where it can meander. In fact, they call it a meander. It can meander as it would normally do across that bottom there. I thought it was quite interesting that instead of trying to channel it, they're, they've done a lot of work in it to let it do what it wants to do. But from the pictures anyway, I haven't gone there and looked, but from the pictures, it changed the looks. Of course, they had the melt ceilings and this type of thing in that bottom for a long time. But you would never know it now by looking at it. The other meeting was with Makeda. The primary emphasis of the meeting was broadband. Everybody's wanting to know. Broadband, wanting to know what's going to happen, who's going to do what, this type of thing. One much, I tried to tell them where we were at, but the problem that they feel like that they've got is that they have some momentum going to push this broadband. And they don't want to lose that momentum. And so they're wanting to continue doing something quite soon. And that was basically the main push of the meeting. The other thing is that the towns, Mankus and Dolores and Cortez, we've got a little bit different perspective on what Cortez is doing from the Connect Four meeting where Shane says that they're going to hire a consultant to see, to see what kind of a business proposition it would be to put broadband to the whole city. But Shane also said he didn't think it works. At Connect Four, he didn't, as I understood him, but he didn't give any hope for it. But he still felt like he had to do the consultant. And but the town board member that's at Makeda, he was, he thought that this was a good thing, that it was a step forward getting broadband to the whole city. But Mankus and Dolores are, they're, they're not, they don't want to wait to push ahead or what? Because they feel like they can't wait much longer, that they've got to do something. And Mankus in particular is looking pretty strongly at developing a plan for the city. So that was about it. They had a couple of presentations, one from CDOT and one from Beckham, Simokey, Simokey, can't say it.
Firewise.
Firewise, or actually the Dwarf Project primarily, so. But that's all I had.
I would just comment on the, so the commissioner from Oregon contacted me over the weekend. And Leanne and Doug is working on, what do you call that? A dual pole. And it's going to be, they gave us the dates that the commissioners and the school and all the players in Oregon at that, at that town, how they set up the broadband. And then we'll do a conference call, it looks like within the next couple of weeks from what the dates they sent. And I think after that conference call with all the players involved, that it'll, things will start happening.
We'll know which direction.
Yeah, we'll know which direction to go. And then I had a conference call last week with WIR, which is the fifteen westernmost states about the resolutions that are going to be presented up on public lands in Columbus, Ohio next week. And San Diego County has presented a resolution about the methane role that is going to be very, it's going to be a very interesting meeting. There'll be a lot of different points of views on that proposed resolution, so.
And that's out of San Diego County?
Yeah. They, they gave a list of the people going and they're sending land and the pageant. And Hillary's not going, so big, big fight.
Lots of discussion.
Yeah. There were some other good resolutions that, there was a lot of resolutions, I think forty or fifty, so. Be a long, long day on next Friday. Other than that, I think we have all three agencies here, so if you guys would like to come on up, I'll get started.
How's it going today?
Pretty good.
It's always good after a rain.
Indeed, indeed. Feels great.
Did you get James? Is he coming in?
Okay, who would like to start?
Derek can.
Sure. I don't have a whole lot today. I just wanted to give you an update on the fires that we've had here recently. The four twelve fire, which was within Monizuma County, up near the head of Ryman and Salt Creeks there. That one is still, you know, we're seeing a little bit of activity. We did have Ryman Creek, Salt Creek Trail, and then a small portion of the Divide Road closed that will probably, well, not probably, we will be lifting those closures here in the next couple of days. Activity has subsided enough now that we feel it's safe for the public to get back in there. So we'll be doing that. Were you going to talk about the East Room? Maybe I should wait on.
Go ahead and I'll just pitch in on that because that was on both of us.
Right. So the East Room fire, which was just a little west and north of Bradfield Ridge area. That fire is about seven hundred acres now. There is still a little bit of activity, but as we were talking, we got a lot of rain over the last few days up in that country. So we're feeling pretty good about it as far as not having any, you know, major concerns with it. There is a little bit of activity off the rim down below, but nothing up on top to speak of. We didn't have any kind of a closures or anything like that in place for that incident. But we were, you know, discouraging the public from going up in that country. Not that we get a lot of folks up there at this time of year anyways. Although it'll probably start picking up now with the hunting season coming on here pretty soon. The archery folks will probably be up all over the forest scouting. And as you all know, the Glade is a pretty popular place for hunting. So there again, they're going to probably increase the amount of containment just based on the precip that we've received here over the last few days. But we'll probably continue to see smoke there in that area until we get either a lot more precipitation and, or, you know, maybe even into the fall and before the first snows come. Because like I said, down off that rim, we're not doing anything as far as any kind of suppression, just because it's steep and rugged. And, you know, it's doing good things as far as cleaning up the understory. So there was no reason to put firefighters in that type of situation when good things are occurring.
So just to add to that, it started lightning right on the rim. So that was BLM. So this is my first fire as an agency administrator, thanks to Connie, to get some experience out there. Went out one day with Derek and, you know, looked at the line. It really looks good. They did some mastication in terms of fuel breaks and stuff that are really going to help that in the future. And of course, you know, it's doing what it should over the rim. And as he said, it's so steep there, you could not safely put anybody there. So it's gone now pretty much to monitoring the situation. And, you know, it's just right there on the county line, it's right the south.
Is it, is it kind of right by the pyramid? Is that where it kind of where?
It's like, so that was all new country to me in the Glade. So it's south of big, that big reservoir there that's called, you know, and going the big.
Oh, Glade.
So it's the first time I'd been on that part of the Glade. So it was just south, south of there, pretty much forty-five degrees from Dolores or Duff Creek. As you look at, fairly close to three parcels of private land. But all those folks were kept in the loop. It was just managed really well. I was actually learned a lot and was very impressed with the whole operation in that case. And how well the BLM and the Forest Service, you know, who's largely the lead in that fire world, you know, did on that project from my perspective.
It started on a Sunday, didn't it?
I think that's correct, yeah.
It was that big lightning bust that went through that afternoon. Oh, yeah?
Yeah, we did a family formula trip through there.
Okay, well, yeah. And it was burning really nicely. It was burning a lot of the understory and the oak and stuff.
How long you think that's going to burn? Do you have an estimation of how long, how far and how long it's going to go?
We don't expect that there's going to be any further increase in acreage. Most of what's burning is interior. You know, the only thing that's the unknown is if it creeps down and moves around that way off the rim there. But right now, we don't anticipate that that's going to happen. It's been pretty much staying in check where it's at off the rim. And then we pretty much have line on top, well, roads and things like that that are keeping it in check up on top. What about duration? What are we thinking? There again, like I say, I'm not sure, you know, to give an estimate.
Monsoons will put it out.
Right.
I got hit pretty hard yesterday when I entered Duff Creek.
Right. And then the only other thing I had to discuss was the Dolores Norwood Road. We're really close to being able to move forward with proposing a non-binding determination process from the region to the Washington office. One piece of information that we're missing though is that we've talked about the big bulge in the road there. We're looking in all our documents, both at the regional office and at the National Archives there in Denver to see if there's any documentation, whether it be newspaper articles, you know, commissioner minutes, commission meeting minutes, or just, you know, a similar document to what we had with nineteen twenty-two realignment where, you know, it was very evident that the Forest Service and the county were working together to do that realignment at that time. But then there's another one in the early thirties where the road moved even further west, where right now we don't have that documentation. And that's the last piece.
What area?
Well, that's the bulge there that I'm talking about.
By House Creek?
Yeah, from House Creek, pretty much over to Beaver, Beaver up there. So if you guys can look in conjunction with us to see if you have any more information. It seems like, we say we don't, and this is our end as well, you know, we say we don't have anything. And then all of a sudden, somebody finds a document, you know. So if we can keep looking for that type of information, we believe we'll have, you know, pretty much everything to move forward for the entire section. Right now, with that one piece, you know, there's concern that we wouldn't get support for moving forward with the non-binding determination because we don't have the evidence that directly shows that the Forest Service and the commission, you know, were in agreement for relocating that section of road. So if we can find that, then we have the whole puzzle put together and we can move forward as it, as one proposal. Right now, you know, that we would just run the risk of somebody saying, well, you know, you got the first, you know, six miles and then you got the last mile, but there's three miles in there in between that you guys don't have the evidence to support, you know, what you want to do. So, you know, they would give us, you know, possibly permission to move forward with the non-binding determination on those sections that we have good solid evidence for, and then not that one piece. And then we'd have to figure out how we're going to address that one piece. Or, and we can even do that now if that's what the commission would like, is that the pieces that we do have good solid information for, you know, move forward with the process on that. And then as we get more information on the bulge, pursue that later. Or, you know, we could just continue on the path that we've been on until we get it all.
I think we pursue trying to get all of it. I mean, if really we run into that problem and they do try to exclude that, that piece that bulges out, then yes, perhaps we try to just kill at least part of this project. I sent Mr. Capes' question, their attorney's question, I think, to you guys and asked James Dietrich about it. I don't know that we've really made any progress on that, right? We don't know where, if we have any more documentation to give you guys. But do we know where we got, where that sign came from? Mr. Caps was asking about that, where we found that state highway sign.
I don't. Do we, do we need the sign?
No, where it was located when we, when it was, when it was found.
Oh, you mean located on the road?
Right.
I don't know. The sign, the Musgrave family has it and it's, the dad picked it up and it's, they took it to their place and sitting in a, in their shed at Groundhog.
Is that gentleman still?
Oh, he passed away. But the family.
Son passed away too, didn't he?
But the girls, the grand, the girls own the ranch up there at Groundhog.
James, can you reach out to the family and see if they know?
They all live, I'm going to have to do it because they live, they're scattered in three different states, California, they're all over.
See if they have information on what part of the road that sign came from, if they know.
Where did that, the sign need to be found?
On the bulge, it was on the.
Or just a little to the east of the bulge.
All right, I'll work on that. They're, they're up there on and off, so.
Sounds good. And that's all I have. I guess you have any questions for me on anything? Oh, and then I guess one more thing is just that I can finally say that the draft supplemental EIS for Rico West Dolores is on the streets. There again, reading through it, all your points have already been, your comments have already been made. And there's no additional. already been made, and there's no additional comments, there's no need to comment again. But if, based on the updates that we did to some of the sections, if you have further comments, then you're more than welcome to do that, but I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that was out there.
Commissioners? Thank you, Derek.
Thank you. You're looking at me, you want me to go next?
No, I don't.
I will, well. Just to let you know that we're redoing our publications at the Heritage Center. We've had one newspaper type of publication that has been focused on Sand Canyon, so we're taking all of our brochures, and instead of having a bunch of different documents, we're gonna consolidate everything into a newspaper, and then people can either take out the pages that they want once they have it, but we're going to expand information on, you know, how, if you go to the back country, what you need to know, where there are front country, mid-country, back country opportunities for people, so it's just providing some more information and expanding some of the interpretive stuff about natural resources, geology, which includes, you know, CO2 extraction, rangeland, which includes grazing and things like that for a more robust picture. It's a good opportunity for us and the state offices helping with that. So if you have heard anything or have ideas from your constituencies and yourselves, you know, just let me know, we're in the process of working through the draft on that right now, so I'm pretty excited. I think it will be much more helpful to our visitors and provide opportunities that hopefully will encourage them to spend some more time in our county. So that's kind of cool. Just on the twenty-ninth, we have a Four Corners lecture event with Harrison Schmidt, who was the last man who walked on the moon. He is retired and lives in New Mexico, and he's gonna do a presentation. Probably what I'm hearing is, you know, it will incorporate prehistoric cultures and astronomy, so I think it's gonna be a very interesting presentation.
What was that date again?
That date is on the twenty-ninth, and I believe that starts at seven thirty or eight, but I'll get back to you, and you can check, we always put our stuff in the newspaper and on KSJB's page to look, but really encourage everybody to come and see it, it'll be pretty interesting. And that's part of our program that we're developing on night skies and different things.
When you have that set up, could you shoot an email to Melissa?
Yep.
Then she'll send it to our calendars.
All right, we'll get that to you this afternoon. And then, James, yeah, you wanna talk a little bit about just where we're at with Sand Canyon? We've had some really exciting conversations about Sand Canyon, so we're moving ahead and some great, you know, different ideas we're tossing around, so can I pick on you?
Sure. Okay, so what I've done is I've rerun that, reflected the changes that Connie suggested, so we'll have another little version to look at here. We're doing research into the property ownership, and then, so we've got that at Colorado Land and Title right now, and they better miss it for us to pursue some research on that right away.
But what they're talking about is a parking lot for the Sand Canyon Trailhead down in the Campbell Canyon.
So anyway, that's where we're at with it right now, so I think we do have a couple of designs that I think might be pretty viable, but we do need to resolve the ownership.
We've just gotta see if we can do it between the right-of-way and the BLM ownership and, you know, that strip of land is basically an edge holding, so that's managed by Trace Rios Field Office, you know, so it's like, okay, let's just make sure we're looking at all the different options now. And so through James County said, hey, is this a possibility to think about? So it's like, you know, we are keeping our fingers crossed that we might get a better resolution to some of the concerns we've had in the past, so.
Back up just a minute, you said an edge holding of the canon is managed by the BLM, so that's considered BLM, not canon?
Yes, it's, yeah, it's not canon, it's not congressionally part of that boundary established by the proclamation, so therefore it's.
So we're dealing BLM, not canons necessarily on that?
Last time I checked, we're both BLM.
Yeah.
Just to clarify that, Keenan.
You guys split that up at very different times to do different things.
Yeah, yeah, it isn't a conspiracy, but.
Kind of the yo-yo effect.
With that, anything that's outside of the proclaimed boundary has to go under the tree.
The original?
Because only Congress can change that line, so anything that adjoins Canyons of the Ancients, the proclaimed boundary is managed under the Trace Rios Resource Management.
So that Wallace property, is that managed by BLM and not canon? Because you're doing the.
Most of the Wallace was an inholding.
Yeah.
And that's the difference. An edge holding is outside of the monument, and inholding is completely within the boundaries of the monument.
Well, we got another piece, the Pope property then, because it's on the edge.
There were pieces that were in and pieces that were out, outside of the proclaimed boundary. But we have a plan for both, so we're good.
I bet you do. I bet you do. Okay, back to you, how are the environmental assessments going on the Flodyn and the Wallace properties for grazing?
Garth was gonna come in today, he asked to be excused till next month because he's working on a fire assignment, so he'll come and give you a really detailed, you know, presentation on where we're at and what he knows. So, yeah, we're still moving ahead, that's a very high priority for all of us.
Okay, Connie?
That it? Okay. As you know, I was really grateful that Marietta took the East Rim Fire that started on the BLM lands because we were really busy with the Lightner Creek Fire over by Durango, so I'm really happy that that was a very successful outcome for the Lightner Creek Fire, and that was both on CPW lands and BLM lands. Ended up being a little over two million dollars, and sixty percent was on state lands and forty percent was on BLM lands, but real cooperative, good working relationship there, so glad we didn't have to evacuate Durango. So it was a pretty intense fire, and I'm real happy with the outcome there. As a result, though, there's an old coal mine up there called the Boston Mine, and as a result of the Lightner Fire, we believe that the coal mine, either seam or the mine itself, is now burning inside on the coal, so we're working on that, so we're just kind of letting everybody know that if they see some smoke coming up, it's really associated with that coal seam or coal mine fire. We're working with the State of Colorado to look at options there. You remember when we had the Weber Canyon Fire, we had the same thing happen on the north end, where those old coal seams caught on fire as well, worked real close with the state to get those put out, but it does take some time to try to figure out what's burning and how to deal with it, so just thought I'd let you know that. Let's see, what else? East Rim, King Coal, we had our public meeting and the public comment, very close, thank you for sending in your comment on behalf of Monazuma County, we always appreciate that. We received about twenty-seven comment letters, but we haven't yet categorized all the comments and such, so we'll be working on that, we're gonna be meeting with the Utonautanute Tribe with OSM and the BLM here soon, so we wanna make sure that we're.
What's OSM?
Office of Surface Mining Reclamation, something. I don't even know all the acronyms.
Office of Surface Mining, we just call it, rather than all those, because there's a bunch.
And the Art Reclamation, something, something. If you need me to look that up. You know, that's why we do acronyms.
It's gonna be a popular coal mine, one of the people running for governor in Colorado went and did a tour of it here a couple weeks ago.
I'm bringing, asked the King Coal folks to give our staff a tour of it, so if you've never been on an underground coal mine tour, it's definitely worth doing once, so not where I would want to be there. You have to be a certain kind of person to work in an underground coal mine.
No, but that one's much different than most mines you'll be in, so.
In what way, James?
Everything's clean, deep.
Yeah.
We went in three miles.
Oh, you did? Yeah. No, I've been in several over my life, and, you know, it's interesting, each mine is a little bit differently, different, and the nice thing about a lot of the western mines is they're a lot taller, a lot of times.
Very hardworking people that was.
Oh, my goodness, yeah. So with that, James had mentioned that you might wanna talk about the Connecting with Communities MOU again, so he brought forward a handout that I shared with you some time ago, probably it's been several months, I apologize, I don't remember the last time we talked about it. Oh, thank you, James, you gave him a copy. I would love to see Monazuma County sign this Memorandum of Understanding, and really, just to refresh your memories, one of my key goals was because some of our direction is in the recreation realm has been this concept of connecting with communities, I felt it was very warranted to ratify our relationship under a Memorandum of Understanding. If you recall the MOU that I gave you, and I apologize, I didn't make copies of that today, it does say in the very first paragraph that this MOU is a reflection of our ongoing partnership with BLM and the county, and it ratifies it for the continued coordination and cooperation between the BLM and the county. And I think a couple of the things that this MOU really does emphasize and kind of click up the notch, you know, the notch a couple of levels is that we're going into travel management and working with you guys is really important on that, and it just really ratifies that cooperation, as well as it gives the BLM, as I mentioned, a little bit of strategy in our budget. And that handout that I gave you shows you the formulas that recognize that these MOUs do give us widgets towards our budget. One of the questions that you had asked me at the time was, well, how much is this worth? And as I told Larry Dawn a couple of times, it's really hard to say it's worth five thousand or ten thousand or zero, but it works into the formula in that the more MOUs we have in place recognizing our partnerships, the better position it puts us in a budget world. That being said, every other field office in the state is also competing for those monies and those widgets, so I can't tell you an exact dollar amount that each MOU is worth, other than the more I get, the more strategic I can be in getting that, those monies. So the formula is in this handout that I gave you, the third, I think it's the, my page numbers are different than yours, I'm sorry. It's one, two, page five.
Is the Memorandum something that is reissued yearly?
No, it would be a five-year commitment, but if you would want it reissued annually, we can negotiate that timeframe when we read on. We typically do an MOU for five years, and then we can re-up it. The MOU always gives you that clause and you can get out at any point, you know, if you notify us, like thirty days in writing, so there's always that loophole. And MOU, again, is more of a formal recognition of our working together, it's not contractual in any manner, there's no exchange of monies, those are things that are very key within MOU.
Is there some counties that are still not participating?
Every county I've asked has signed an MOU. I haven't gone through and asked Archuleta County, but my other counties have signed an MOU.
I think when we talked last, La Plata County hadn't, but they.
Yeah, I went back and explained to them kind of the values of it, and I think they thought there was money tied to it and that their staff would be held to some sort of additional workload, and they were very concerned about that, because it does, it says something to the effect of sharing of GIS information, you know, all the stuff that we're already doing, and that was what I just clarified with them, is listen, everything in here, you're already doing it. You know, we work together on our GIS database sharing and, you know, information sharing. So once they understood that and talked with their staff, they realized, oh, yeah, we're already doing that, it's not additional workload for the county. So that was their main hesitation.
If we're doing it, why do you need the MOU? If we're already doing it, why do you need the MOU?
Because I can get it, I can count it as a widget towards our budget, James, and so that's a really important part of our budget formula process in BLM Colorado, and so that there's a huge value in that. And I don't think there's anything wrong with ratifying and recognizing the relationship we have with the county in writing, so that's another value that I see. I'm really proud of our working relationship with the county, and I think that just ratifying it in this connecting with communities shows from the recreation and travel management standpoint how we're working closely together as we move forward with that. So I just thought I'd bring it forward one more time.
Let's have a discussion with commissioners about this. What do you say, Commissioner, Phil?
Do you have a copy of the MOU with you?
I just have the one.
I just haven't looked at it in a while, I'm sure I have.
And I can email it to you, I just have to, I hate to do this, but my computer's all funky right now, so I couldn't email it this one. James, I believe you still have a copy of the MOU?
Against me, I can't.
Okay. Okay?
I'll give my two, well, I'd like to vote on this today, if commissioners would be willing to do that. And I just wanna give my two cents on this, and that is, is that a month ago, I was in Ben, Oregon, with the fifteen most western states, WIR, and there's no, it buts about it, the majority of those states are extremely conservative, and I'll give you an example, Garfield County, which is second in oil and gas production, John Martin, they, they're in a fight all the time with BLM and the Forest Service, they signed it. Also Wyoming, the three counties where the largest coal production is, in Wyoming, which is one of the biggest coal-producing counties or states, signed it, and the ex-governor of Wyoming gave a speech, and I can't remember his name, but he was a cowboy, you couldn't get any more conservative than him, and they signed it, then they said there's an out if you, a thirty-day out.
Right.
And their opinion was, is, well, if what you've done so far isn't working, then why wouldn't you try something different?
And again, Keenan, I think it just, it ratifies what we're already doing.
I understand that, but the motive behind all of this seems to be that you're going to garner more dollars into your budget allocation, or you have the potential to garner more money from the federal government for your budget here in the Trace Rios and your field office, and that this is somehow gonna leverage you, help you leverage more money into your allocations or what you can get as far, because that's what we hear all the time, Connie, is that you guys don't have the money.
Right.
You don't have the money to go and do things and do the things that we would, some of the things we'd like to see done.
So let me say something, Keenan, I don't know that I will increase my budget dramatically for these reasons. Number one, when the Silverton properties were transferred to the Gunnison Field Office, they did carve out part of our budget to send to Gunnison, so we've seen a net decrease in our recreation budget as a result of that. The other thing that's really important to understand here is that if I don't do any MOUs, if I don't recognize partnerships formally, we're gonna go down in our budget, so my battle would be to at least stay the same, you know, by getting these partnerships in play, so it protects the budget that I have, what I hope it does is give me the opportunity to increase my budget, but that's all based on what every other field office is doing.
Right, but how does this MOU then give you, why do the feds look at this MOU agreement as leveraging, giving you more leverage or more negotiating room?
Well, let me be real specific to, BLM Colorado has developed budget allocation criteria to disseminate the budget that they receive from Congress. This is something that our state director has made a decision on in how to allocate budget in BLM Colorado. They've come up with a different criteria that they require each field office to maintain or have, and it is really kind of widget-oriented. So, you know, miles of trail or maintenance, and so they have all these widgets, and the formulas for yours for recreation is there. So it's in the best interest of each field office to produce the biggest amount of widgets they can within those areas, so our budget either stays the same or goes up. But every field office is doing that. So it's really important that we are as strategic and as ambitious as we can be in those areas to maintain our budget.
So will this be strictly for recreation monies?
This is really specifically related to the recreation budget. And that's why it's called Connecting with Communities. And this MOU is really about travel management, recreation. That being said, San Miguel County wanted to expand this MOU and make it all-inclusive of all the areas that we work in. So theirs is a much more robust MOU. And one part of their MOU includes all the Connecting with Community language that they wanted to expand there. So theirs is a little bit different than the other communities that I've signed with.
What did they expand it into?
All-inclusive.
Everything that goes on with the...
Yeah, to work together, yeah. So it's a much, much bulkier document, too.
So it was described to me in a different way, and that was that it wasn't about the BLM getting more leverage, it was about the county getting more leverage. And I guess I would go back to, we've been commissioners for four and a half years, and the commission before us, that was eight years, that's 12 and a half years. And I look back at what we've accomplished, not much. So if there's something that we can do that would give us more leverage, I don't see why we wouldn't try it.
Will this give us more leverage with you?
I think that...
We have to be at the table. According to what I was told, we have to be at the table. On things that, decisions that they make now that we're not at the table with. This gives us a seat at the table on additional, like maps, like I could...
It engages, it engages you guys, yeah, even more. Now, as you know, under FLIPMA, we still have the obligation to coordinate, especially with the resource management side of things. We have that now done, and we're moving forward implementing that plan. And each time you sign an MOU, it puts that emphasis on setting at the table for that specific project or process or whatever. This is really focusing on the recreation planning, the travel management planning. So it just kind of makes it highlighted, Keenan, in that, yeah, we're coordinating with you guys, and we're working with you every month, and we're keeping you informed, including you, in a lot of the stuff that we do that relates to the county. But this just emphasizes, hey, we know that we're going to do an extra effort on the travel management. And, you know, we're doing, we're doing that already. You know, you guys are helping develop a proposed action for travel management. It really is ratifying that and ensuring that seat at the table for specific projects and processes. So Marietta, do you want to speak?
I just want to add that this is a national strategy. So it is really about reaching out to communities. So probably more importantly than the widgets is that, you know, we're showing that, yes, we support this, we're directed to do this, we want to do this in a positive way. And the only way then for BLM to do that is to sort of have this agreement, which, you know, is not contractually binding, but it gives everybody a little bit more clarity about their roles and their seat at the table. So it's just important for what we, at this level of the organization, can do. And in some cases, you know, so many things happen that are beyond the scope of our authorities that we look for these kind of things to, you know, use and provide clarity to our relationships.
Well, for me, I just, so I've been around a lot of other counties, I've been around a lot of other states, and I've seen things that are going on in different states, different counties. How far ahead of us they are on trails and campgrounds. And I'm thinking to myself, well, if it's all belongs to one agency, then they should all get about the same amount of money or the same resources to do all these things. But we're way behind, in my opinion, in Monzuma County than these other counties. And so I'm asking myself, why? Why are we? And I don't know, this is the answer, I don't know, something, they're doing something better than us because they're so far ahead of us, it's not even funny. I don't know what the answer is, but if this helps, I'm going, if you can, if you can get rid of it in 30 days, on writing to do it.
We don't have that, I didn't see that in here, that there was a duration or that you could get out of it in 30 days. Maybe we should. I mean, I just skimmed it over about three or four times.
Oh, it says 60-day, but we can make it 30 days. Early termination, the BLM and county may terminate this MOU at any time with or without cause or reason with a 60-day written notice. We can change it to 30.
What letter are you on?
The next to the last page, number M, as in M. Not Montezuma?
Good, the copy that you gave me doesn't have that. No, it goes, it goes from J to P.
I bet you did the faux pas of only printing the fronts and stuff as a backs, I do that all the time. Anyway, I'm happy to email this to you guys. And we can tweak some of it, if you want to add some stuff, Larry Dawn, I'd be really interested in maybe sitting down with you and hearing some of your ideas about what you think is missing, you know, on BLM lands and Monzuma County, I think that'd be a really valuable conversation. Go ahead, I'm sorry, James.
I said, and Forest Service as well.
Yeah, because if you have some ideas, you know, we have a few ideas ourselves. We're going to be jumping into the special recreation management area plans, and, you know, we're working on travel management.
Well, campgrounds are closing, would be one, bathrooms decommissioned. Why don't we, would you gentlemen be willing to hold off on this for a month?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from maybe some other counties as to how well they feel this has worked for them or if they've seen a...
Well, the reason that I'm going to be with, I'm going to be with 300 of those commissioners next Friday, and I can reach out to them and find out, actually, I'll take this and then let them read it and then see how they would tweak it where the county said it's working. Would that be fine?
Yeah, hey, this is about our partnership. So we want you to feel totally comfortable with what you're signing and what you're committing to. And, you know, a couple of the MOUs that we have in place is, we can add appendix on, you know, what is it that our desires are for work lists, you know, in the future? I mean, this is the tool that we can use to work together, guys. Let's make it useful for both the county and the county.
I know, and it would be back to the forest, but as far as management and money, I know that we quit spraying weeds because of vegetarian constraints, or at least it's not, it's not where it was.
I wouldn't say that, I mean, we're still treating the same amount of weeds that we had before. We're just unfortunately not able to be as responsive to the, you know, the individual saying, hey, you know, I got a patch of weeds here that I hadn't seen before, and until now, we've actually changed that. You know, we had to reorganize from the time that we separated from the BLM, having that service provided to us by the BLM, and it was a great relationship.
What I'm thinking of is Gary Gannas and Mr., gosh, I don't know his name.
Jensen.
Mike Jensen.
No, no, they were the two guys spraying for you, Gary Gannas.
A little partner, yeah.
JR.
JR.
Yeah, he retired.
So we no longer...
Are they replaced then with somebody?
Well, we just had to absorb that workload into our current organization, and that took us some time to get people certified and trained. And now we have Corey Ortell, who is our range management specialist, who is able to now do that. We're not able to be, you know, just back to where I was going, is we're not able to be as responsive as we were when we had a dedicated crew of Gary and JR, you know, but we are a lot better than we were a year ago, just because we have that position in place now and he has those responsibilities, so we have been able to respond. But then, being able to work with you all, with the county, and then just from a contractual standpoint, there again, we're pretty much doing about the same amount of spraying as we have been over the last few years.
So, and Gary's still around, he's just working exclusively on BLM lands, and because our land base expanded...
I thought he sold his home.
Gary's back, he sold his home, but he comes back every summer because he loves us so much that he works for the BLM on the weed crew.
So he can be in Monzuma County.
Yeah, because he loves, he loves being back here. But anyway, so he is the weed crew, he is. We don't have a helper, we weren't able to afford a helper, but Gary's still very much going around spraying weeds on BLM lands. But he did have to expand that workload into the other counties now that we, you know, reconfigured the BLM as a result of the service-first solution. But we also contribute to our weed agreements with each of the counties. So we contribute money to your weed programs in the counties under agreement to spray rights of ways, county rights of ways on BLM lands. So we feel like it's a great working relationship, and, you know, anytime you guys are finding needs that you don't feel are being addressed, you know, just let us know, and we'll get them on the list to try to, to address.
Can you chip over, what do they call it, the Historic Society?
Ship-O.
Chip-O, have you heard back from them?
I've been playing phone tag with Holly, but I had recommended setting up a field trip, maybe in September, early September, to go out and look at the existing Phil's World trails. As I indicated to you, Larry Dawn, I think that'd be really good to show her, you know, the issues that they have are social trails, cupping of trails, and looting of sites. So we wanted to be able to bring them out to Phil's World and kind of show them what's been going on through the last 17 years on the existing Phil's World trail system. That being said, I also spoke with Derek about bringing them maybe up to some Forest Service trails because they're hearing the same issues and concerns with Forest Service trails as well. And we felt like working between the two agencies with Ship-O is a really important step forward.
So last, was it Thursday or Friday? Senator Gardner, actually, in Washington DC, they had hearings, and they used your Phil's World expansion as an example of how to improve the Historic Society. So I don't know what came with those meetings, but they wanted all the information that we had, and it was, you were used as an example.
In a good way.
In a good way.
I always like good examples, not not...
I heard that, too, yay!
Thank you. And actually, I had talked with Senator Gardner's staffer, and she was asking quite a bit about it, so good to hear that that was useful information. We're very proud of the Phil's World expansion. We, I think that we've got two pieces to this puzzle with Ship-O, which is the expansion conversation and then the original Phil's World trail system. And we're trying to make sure that they understand that those are two different situations, that, you know, the OA Phil's World decision is different than what we're doing here with the current EA and analysis. But we cannot get to decision until we solve this.
We're working on it.
Yes, and thank you for your support and cooperation. So anyway, when we get that field trip set up, because I know that they had approached you or you guys had approached them, Larry Dawn, let's all work together in maybe getting that conversation and field trip set up, because I think it would really be valuable to get them on the ground and see what has or hasn't been happening in Phil's World, because we're pretty proud of the fact that there aren't social trails, that, you know, that we're doing all the things that they're worried about as issues.
Yeah, we're experiencing the same thing on the overlook trail. When we did that, coordination with them, you know, they pretty much stipulated that we had to have a monitoring program in place, which we had to enter into a memorandum of agreement, you know, to ensure that, you know, they were concerned that we wouldn't carry through with the monitoring program. But in the last two years that we've done that, you know, it's usually in the first three or four years, I would say three to five years, where you have issues with people being compliant with, you know, whatever it is you're trying to implement. And, you know, we are not having any issues with social trails or anything like that on that overlook trail. So if we were going to, you know, it's our feeling that we would have seen those issues right off the bat and then had to work towards addressing them to get people not to do that anymore. But people are already being compliant with it, you know, right off the bat. So, you know, we're pretty confident that that's really just not a real big issue there. And after five years, if we can continue to demonstrate that, then we don't have to do the monitoring anymore. But we can use that as, you know, evidence that, you know, we aren't having an issue with social trails when it comes to our non-motorized, you know, mountain bike trail systems.
And in anticipation of that issue coming forward from Ship-O in the Phil's World expansion, we actually front-end loaded that as a mitigation. And so, you know, we put that in upfront, saying we would monitor, we would do basically what they did on the McPhee Trail, and we're still, we're still kind of having those challenges. We anticipated that need, we put it in, and they still aren't satisfied with where we're at with the Phil's World expansion. So I think that the conversation is ongoing right now with the Phil's World expansion. I don't know where it's going as far as...
Can't they just use the 17 years that the Phil's World trail system has been in existence, and there's no social trails for...
Well, that's hoping, we're hoping that's what we can show them, Larry Dawn, you know, showing them, you know, going out in the field and looking at this and looking at, you know, things like cupping trails and, you know, the social trail issue and the concert, you know, the protection of sites out there. And I think we can very much show them how nice it is out there, how well-protected sites are, and, you know, where mountain bikers are going and what they're doing. It isn't about, you know, looting and those kinds of things.
It's just odd that, and I know that it's because of the Indian roots, but you can go to Van, Oregon, that has probably the same amount of acreage, a couple thousand, whatever Phil's World is, and they probably have 100 times as many trails. You ride 400 yards, and then there's where you go that way, you go that way. We're completely set up different here. It fills world as well as Boggy Draw. They're directional, it just, it's mind-boggling that in one part of the country where they're doing 100 times as many trails, they don't have any problems than here.
Well, we are blessed with having high cultural site density down here, and that brings on some management challenges, but it's not impossible, you know, to make both of these things work.
I think, too, that as this comes to resolution, which I have no doubt it will from that archaeological standpoint, what we learn and what we do here is going to have a lot of implications for other public lands, because we are dealing with such a high density of archaeological sites. And it does, when we're getting these people out here who are just seeing it on a piece of paper as opposed to really looking at the issues and the management on the ground and how that's been accomplished, I think you'll see a lot of headway simply from that clarification and that conversation. And I have recommended, especially in terms of monitoring, is let's set up some research grids where we're looking, and we can actually show that that impact to cultural sites is limited because people are not going out there and getting off of their bikes. They're not going out there to look for archaeological sites. There's so many people using that trail system that that is part of the eyes and ears that are out there and support that protection. So, you know, it is challenging, but because of that challenge, we are going to be able to offer a different perspective in terms of managing these kind of things as we move forward, because I don't suspect that mountain biking is going to get any less popular.
Well, if Ship-O gets their way, where they're saying, first you couldn't go over it anywhere, now you got to be so far away from it, they'll lock down all of our public lands in this county.
Well, you know, their mitigation possibilities, looking at plating and different things, that I know Connie's also been, you know, very, you know, creative in trying to figure out how we go about this process. So I do have to give her some kudos. So I do have to give her some, some kudos there for really stepping out of that comfort zone and saying, well, you know, there has to be a way to make this happen. And I just know it's really important to her. And I, from the outside, can see more progress than probably any of you can see just by looking in. So don't, don't get discouraged here.
And I think having the county there as a partner and advocate of why it's so important to Montezuma County, recognizing that the BLM is avoiding, you know, sites and doing all the things that we need to do under law to make sure that we're protecting cultural resources, you know, being that support infrastructure is so important. So getting with, out with them and showing them all of this in September, I hope.
You feel like Chippo doesn't trust what you're doing out there and your, and your planning for this expansion and how you regard the archaeological sites and stuff? Do you think they, they don't feel like you're doing the appropriate job with those?
Um, no, Kevin, I don't think it's a trust issue. I just think that they really are focused on that single resource. And, you know, what they don't have is a lot of experience and data that shows that these, you know, that mountain biking isn't impacting, you know, and that's why we want to bring them out and say, listen, look at this. Mountain bikers are out there to, to bike. And as Marietta has said, you know, they're not out there to, to go for the archaeological sites. They're, you know, they're out there to bike. And so by having that presence, it actually provides some protections in our minds to, you know, cultural resources.
Yeah, sometimes it's just a, you know, exactly that, a lack of understanding, a lack of, you know, knowledge. We had that same exact experience with the air quality department here in the area with regards to prescribed burning. You know, just four years ago, you know, they pretty much had a hard and fast, you will not burn more than, you know, two, 250 acres a day. You know, now we're burning fifteen hundred acres in a day because we brought those people out, showed them, you know, what's going on, you know, on our prescribed burns, what the impacts are to, you know, the nearby communities and things like that, that they now have an understanding because they've seen it, they've been there and say, oh, this really doesn't have that big of an effect on, you know, communities as long as, and it's actually better if you guys get it knocked out quicker because you're, you're having that reduced impact because it's a shorter duration. So when you actually get them here, show them exactly what's going on, you know, that just as they say, you know, picture is worth, you know, a thousand words because they can see it. You know, so I'm hoping we'll have a similar outcome.
Because we, we see it out there and you see it out there.
The key is getting them here.
I think so, Kenan, I think that really is our next step. What we wanted to do though is finish up getting the survey work done for the 2008 trail system and finish that up. There were some missing pieces of survey that we needed to get finalized. So we're trying to get that done so we can show them all the data as we bring them out on the ground for the whole Phil's World existing trail system. Because in the expansion, we've avoided all sites. So, you know, we want to be able to show them the difference in how we do this.
I just have one real quick go back. I just want to make sure that you at all, our regional forester is going to be in town next week visiting with the districts. But I don't have the date for, he's having a partner social there. The new Mexican restaurant there by the, just as you get into Durango there on your right.
Used to be Christina's.
Yeah, it used to be.
San Francisco?
Yes, that's it.
Francisco's?
No, 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 it's not.
It's, I, Albertson's at the hotel.
Well, this one's as you just get into town.
Yeah, it's just out there on the.
But in the west.
Right.
Motel, then with the motel and stuff.
But you should have received an invite and if you haven't.
Uh-uh, we haven't.
Okay, I'll make sure you get that information. If somebody has time and wants to go visit.
The one from Denver?
Correct. Brian Farabee, so he's.
What's the region though? You said he's the regional supervisor, but what's our region?
Uh, we're Region Two, so that encompasses Colorado, parts of Wyoming, South Dakota and Kansas, oh, and Nebraska.
What day is that going to be?
That I don't recall. I believe it's Tuesday, next Tuesday, but I'm not positive. But I'll get that information out to you today. And I'll just send it to you all directly.
Twenty-five. Right, commissioners, any additional questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Put this back on your agenda for.
Our next one? Yep, absolutely, thank you. I just have to take a look at this bolo tie, excuse me. Man, that's amazing craftsmanship. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder where James took off, I wonder if he's ready to give us a presentation. Good night, this is if we can get James to give us his report before we adjourn for lunch.
You're going to the elections committee?
Yes.
They're going to show us all their new voting machines.
He's on his way in.
No, they've got all new stuff.
Oh, okay. Make sure there's no pipeline to the Russians, will you?
No internet connection.
Hi, James.
Hi there.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, well, I guess we'll follow up on the BLM parking lots. So I talked with the Colorado landed title. What they want is $500 to trace out all the, the property ownership to find out who owns that, that right of way. So as we, I think I've already explained, within our, our land records, you know, it clearly shows private property for the Lamb House. It clearly shows private property on the south side of the road. But there are no property records associated with the right of way. And so it is a separate and distinct polygon, but I have no land records associated with it. So that's what the question is, who, who actually holds the title to it? Whether it's the county or at the time, did it go to the state? And we, we just don't know. Although all we have so far is that the property, it is the, the resolution that says the property that was acquired did not revert back to the private landowner. So.
So we may have a hundred-foot right of way down there.
Uh, it may be more than that, I think it's a hundred and twenty. So I feel pretty confident, the land and title company felt pretty confident that it looked like it was a separate parcel, so. But we don't know who it is. So I guess that's what we need to, to make a decision on is whether we want to pursue that through the land and title company to, to trace that out.
So we need to spend $500, you're saying?
That's what they, they said they, they charged us, yes.
What do you commissioners think about that?
That would make a tremendous difference in that parking lot and what we're doing down there if we, if it came back in what we suppose might be there, huh?
I think it makes a big difference, yes.
Makes a big difference.
Yes.
Is that, now, that's a hundred and twenty-foot right of way, that goes out, that goes.
Clear to the south side and it gives us some ability to realign that road.
Road, yeah.
If needed. Now, we, it's, you know, there's some stuff down there, there's that irrigation ditch. It's possible that if you realign the road, you may have to do some work on the ditch too. As long as you're within that hundred and twenty feet, you know, you, we should be able to work with whatever irrigation company owns that ditch.
But on the north side where the parking lot's going to be, that, that would be significant.
Yes, it would be significant. I, I believe we can fit, you know, the required amount of parking in. And, you know, we've gone around this long enough. I mean, BLM is talking about talking to the adjacent landowner down there and seeing if we can't get parking on private land. You know, that's sort of, sort of the approach they took with the Lamb property.
That's not what we're after here. We're after their asset to take care of their asset on their property. They've got the properties to do it on.
They do.
Our commissioners, will you spend the 500 to find that information out?
I am.
Yes.
Okay, all right, then I'll, I'll give them the notice to go ahead and commence that immediately.
Nail down.
Uh, I guess the other thing I wanted to visit the commissioners about was the, the campgrounds that are down there in the Lower Dolores. And, uh, you know, I did talk with Julie Kiebel. She basically wants just from us, um, you know, just to say, yeah, we, we approve of letting you guys take care of the camp areas. Yeah. So, and I don't know if this is something that we want to, maybe we want to kind of see how it goes for them first. But, you know, we can certainly work out some kind of a partnership in the future with them. And I think we've got some, some objectives that rely each other, you know, weed control, things like that, some, just the basic stuff. And I think we could work with Dolores County to figure out how we could, you know, handle some of that kind of stuff. It seems like they want to take the lead.
To pursue this?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do that too.
Okay. Okay, they're working up an MOU with, with the BLM. They've got some language in that MOU that they're, they're having some, some concern about. Basically, the BLM says if you take this over, then we're held liable for nothing. They've, they've got some hiccups over that. That's, you know, that's for their attorney to work through. If we get ourselves into that situation, hopefully that's all resolved. And I don't see an MOU coming our way, but perhaps, I'm just pointing out that, you know, we may want to consider that even with Dolores County to kind of line up who does what. But that'll be something to keep, keep an eye out for.
They'll give you a copy again?
They'll give us a copy, yes. And I can forward you a copy, John, of what, what Forest Service has already given to them, I mean, BLM. But they're negotiating language, so it may, may turn out different.
Yeah, yeah, just really.
Okay, and I, I spent a lot of time last week redrawing this, this plan for the BLM. And so, you know, the original plan, we had, had a restroom that was closer to the entrance. They said, no, that's going to make this, basically it's going to make it nothing but a potty stop, a rest area. So we, we, I put the restroom back towards the trailhead proper, kind of realigned some of the, some of the, the parking along the, be the east side of it, try to make sure it would keep everything within that hundred-foot right of way. And it still looks like it's going to fit. What we're not down to though is we don't have survey drawings for it. So, I mean, I can go out and I can stretch a tape, I can, can line it up by eyeball as best we can, dimension it off. It looks like it's going to fit. But without having the survey drawing, you know, we can't get, get down to that level of detail. So where I'm going with this is that the BLM at one point had said that they can help us out by getting everything kind of into the survey, the engineering department. Basically, they can help us out with that. If we can get this thing moved along far enough to kind of get them to, to kind of assign it to the engineering department and get some really precise drawings, that would be a good step. I, I'm just trying to push this thing as fast as we can.
It's a dangerous situation, we're going to kill somebody.
Yeah, absolutely, it is a public health safety issue down there. And we've got to get, get the ball rolling somehow.
Are they going to build this parking lot, once all of this is done?
Well, yeah, that's, that's our goal, of course. We've got no, no commitment from them to build anything at this point. So, and then what they're telling me is that they're going to have to look for, for money to do it. So they've probably got no budget to build it, is kind of my guess. And we'll have to, you know, after a conversation with Connie about it, I think we'll have to probably come up with some sketches for some of these other areas, like the Summit parking area, roll them all in together and try to make one big package out of it to make it competitive with this new grant. This new grant is, is kind of like the FLAPP grant, except they've got a new, new title for it. It's basically, they just rehash this thing, repackage it, maybe some slight differences, but it amounts to the same thing. So, but it's a competitive grant and we'll have to.
So the more parking lots they should throw in there at once, probably the better.
I think so, that's what, what she feels like too.
It would show a need.
Yeah, yeah. Because we do have a serious need in multiple different areas. And I think, you know, as we advance our discussions about what's happening up in Summit, maybe even taking a look at that road would be, you know, it's a mile of road that could use some improvement roughly. So that could be something we may want to package into that type of a proposal too.
Plus the parking lots on Road M and L that the Phil's World expansion is approved.
Yes, yes. So I think all those kind of, kind of areas, we ought to probably throw as much in together as we can to make this as competitive as possible. You know, and I'm happy to continue doing, you know, some of that design work as much as we can fit in. You know, it takes a while to, to go through that stuff, but, I mean, gosh, if we don't, we've got to get the ball moving on this, this somehow.
We've been talking about this for two years.
Oh, yeah, and it's, uh, well, we've been frankly talking about it for a lot longer than that. But since this commission has been seated, we've gotten. So anyway, I'll do whatever, whatever it takes as far as design works goes. I mean, we can, can draw, draw sketches, I mean, I can, I can produce, you know, cost estimates.
Would Ernie help you at all in that survey and doing some of that survey down there? Would Ernie name us via?
Possibly.
Or if you get, you know, meet, meets and bounds and stuff like that?
Yeah, possibly, yeah.
Well, I think we need to find out what our right of way is their very first thing and know, know exactly what we're dealing with there.
So, and then that's going to relate back to the Chippo. So the timing with Chippo, trying to get them down here to visit with them, I think that's another good one to visit with them about.
Yeah.
Because as, um, BLM has pointed out that they, they think that there is a cultural site within that hundred-foot right of way. And Chippo maintains that they've got the authority over all, all county.
All everything.
County and city property, so, you know, we'll probably have to go through Chippo with that too. I mean, in my mind, the only, the only answer to that one is to plate that one. Unless you want to excavate it and just get that stuff out of there. Chances are it's a pretty, pretty minor site. Seems like plating it and providing that separation and just moving forward with the project is probably the appropriate way to handle that. I did talk with Chippo, now she was saying that she could maybe make a, a meeting in August. Now Connie, what I heard here was pushing towards more September, so.
We get her committed to something.
Yeah, I'll keep trying to push her on that then.
Yeah, if she can do it in August, let's do it.
Yeah, that's how I feel too, so. Okay, I'll, I'll continue to push her on that and, and I, I, you know, Derek brought up the whole thought of rolling the Forest Service in on that. That's what I was thinking to begin with because we've got the same issues with the Forest Service. You might as well just talk about all this at one time. If we have to visit, make a whole day of going around and visiting these places, I mean, it's well worth it.
No, no, they get down here and see that, that these, granted, they're archaeological sites, but like you said, they're very insignificant things. I mean, they're, they're not things that are going to be, come in and be excavated and, you know, something dug with. I mean, we're going to find some leeway there to say, yeah, granted, it was an archaeological site, protect it the best you can and, and. They're going to have to, they're going to have to.
Well, they're, so they're trying to, they're trying to expand the boggy draw system to full and they're using the same argument the Historic Society is, there can't be that many Indian ruins up there. They don't have a clue because they have bid down here.
But I think that, you know, Connie is right, they've got, they've got a one resource focus and, and, you know, it's all about protecting that at all costs, so. They've just got to, got to shift their perspective a little bit.
We need to read the Bible, the living is more important than the dead.
That's right, that's right. When you think about Rome, you know, I mean.
Yeah, but look, Europe, Europe.
They can never do anything. Layers and layers and layers, so, and that's just the, that's nature of the beast, yeah. Okay, uh, I guess that's all I have for, for today.
And then you'll keep us informed with the, the trail to Masonhurst?
Yeah, we're going to have a, a meeting on, but it'll be a conference call on Thursday. And so we'll get all of our, our partners together to kind of discuss where we're at with everything. I'll make sure we're okay with that, the PEL and environmental linkage study. I've been in conversation with CDOT on that last week, so they had a few revisions on that which we've addressed and I think we're, we're just pretty good on that.
And then what about the ATV trail from, from Montezuma County?
We need to keep, keep getting re-engaged with that. So I'll talk with, I've got a meeting with Ken Curtis, I mean, yeah, Ken Curtis and, and Mike Preston. And so we'll be kind of strategizing on that Sage Inn area, which is a part of the whole trail, trail deal. And so that's kind of our strategy is to, to figure out what a, a working group will look like and try to get this working group, you know, rolling by August, basically has them, they have it appointed and so we can kind of get, get moving on that.
And then is, is any commissioners, or you want to that drought manage, or drought meeting?
Contingency, drought contingency plan, I'm, I'm going to try and go to that, yes.
I think it's going to be a pretty important meeting.
Yeah, and that's, what is that?
That's at seven o'clock tonight.
Tonight?
At the DWC.
DDCD. Shouldn't make that.
Oh, it's, long story short, where their residents down in McCamell Canyon had the water for a hundred years adjudicated. Now, FBI says that they need to pay for it and so it's causing all kinds of controversy and they're having a public meeting about it tonight. My opinion is it's worked for the last hundred years, why in the heck are you screwing with it? It's in case there's a drought, but. it? If it's in case there's a drought, what to do, how to do with the water, it's pretty simple. If you don't have as much water, you don't use as much. But anyways, causing a lot of neighbors against neighbors and stuff like that, so.
It seems like we've experienced some droughts in the past, that, uh- Anyway.
Oh, it's, it was, it's crazy, absolutely. I think, I think when Mary, or, uh- She said about SHPO, that this would be in the same category as, she said, well, you know, why is SHPO, used to you couldn't go over the Indian Run. Now they're saying you got to be so far away from it. And I lumped this in the same category. SHPO's trying to justify their job. They've ran out of things to do, so they're like, well, we're going to say you got to be so far away from the Indian Run now. And I believe that DWCD and NBI has done the same thing, that they're like, well, anyway, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Okay, I, this adds up for me. Anything, uh, anything else?
No, thank you. All right, we'll, uh, journey for lunch. Oh, actually, go on.
Tour.
Yeah, go to the church. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to reconvene from lunch, and the first thing on the agenda is we have a, a public hearing. Kim, could you, do you roll call and, and read the public hearing?
Commissioner Soukla?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Tellew?
President.
Attorney Baxter?
Here.
Administrator Bruner is absent, and Kim Persson, Monizum County Clerk and Recorder. Notice that hereby given that the Monizum County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing and determining high impact and special use permits for a CO2 well and associated pipeline submitted by Kinder Morgan CO2 Company, Agent Chris Lokness. On property located at 23930 Road 8, Pleasant View, Colorado, consisting of 6.08 acres, more or less, located north of Road 10, south of Road 8, situated in Section 14 Township, excuse me, Township 38, north range 19 west, NMPM. The hearing will be held Monday, July 17, 2017, at 1:30 PM, Commissioners Hearing Room, District Courthouse 109 West Main, Cortez, Colorado. Interested persons mention and give input. Information may be obtained from the Planning Department, Room 305, District Courthouse, Cortez, Colorado, or accessed online at http.monzumacounty.org, web department's planning. You may also contact the Planning Department at 970-565-2801 with questions. This file can be inspected in the Planning Department during regular office hours dated this 13th day of June 2017. Kim Persson, Court, Board of County Commissioners, Monizum County, Colorado, published in the Cortez Journal on Friday, June 16, 2017.
All right, thank you very much, Kim. Uh, for those of you that don't know the process, we'll have Leanne give us any more information, additional information if there is, and, then we'll go to the commissioners for discussion, and then we'll open it up to public hearing if somebody would like to make a comment. So, Leanne, is there any additional information?
Um, we did not receive any agency comments. It went to the Planning Commission for review on June 8. Um, there was some discussion regarding, um, noise, the threshold standard for noise. Um, it was recommended as a contingency to the motion to approve made by the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, that they follow COGCC Regulations Rule 802 and Colorado Advice Statute 2512-101 regarding noise, uh, which is a stricter standard, which they are held to regardless of, um, our threshold standard. Uh, but we implemented that into the, uh, into the motion. Also, there is a pending agreement, a pending road use agreement with, uh, between Kinder Morgan and, uh, the Monizum County Road Department regarding, uh, changing the truck route during the construction of Road CC to keep heavy truck traffic off of, off of that road. So, uh, I would recommend that as a contingency if, if the commissioners still decide to, to move this permit forward. Um, other than that, it's been pretty smooth sailing. And we have representatives, if there are things like to add.
Commissioners? Any, if there are any questions yet? Did you guys have anything to add to that before I opened it up to public hearing? Would you like to come up?
Oh.
Oh, you got this.
Literally just happened before we got here, so there is that agreement.
Well, come on up.
What was the road agreement again?
Uh, because they're doing the construction on Road CC, they are going to, uh, go CC down to 15 and then to BB.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
How you doing, Mr. Hope?
I'm good.
So you got the road agreement in place, huh?
We do.
Good.
Yes. Nothing jumped out at us.
Mm-hmm.
So this is a directional well that we're drilling. Uh, it's about a little over 2,000 feet, uh, southeast of, of where the surface location is.
So you'll be drilling back, back to the southeast?
Correct, correct. Again, private minerals, private surface.
Mm-hmm.
Surface use agreements are in place. Uh, Brad White is the surface owner. Um, during drilling, it's going to, the pad will be six, about six acres. Uh, during interim reclamation after drilling, it'll be pared back to a little less than an acre. Mm-hmm. We have conducted, conducted quite a bit of archaeological, um, avoidance in this area, although it is private property. We did go ahead and we have rerouted the flow line to avoid some arcs, sites that were identified, as well as some padding mitigation for the access roads, so we, we are being mindful of the cultural resources in the area as well.
Good for you guys.
All right, all right. At this time, we'll open it up to, uh, public comment. If you would like to comment on this proposed high-impact permit, if you would state your name and address, address the commissioners, please.
Kayla Park, 7672 County Road CC, Pleasant View. What I want to know is, uh, what's going to happen to the methane that comes out of this CB5 well? And they're going to be attaching the CB1 well, which was drilled back in the eighties, and we know it's a methane producer. What's going to happen to that methane?
To my knowledge, there's no methane associated with our production. It's just CO2 and water.
You're wrong about that.
You got a monitor out there?
Uh, actually, this is not an urban legend. Uh, the name of the farmer is Eric White. Uh, he is Brad White's son. When they were refurbishing, uh, the CB1 well, uh, a few years ago, a couple of years before the Cal Canyon, uh, development happened, they, it was in preparation for that, uh, Eric was out there with his tractor, working in the field, and the two, or I think it was two, I don't know, don't quote me on the number, workers at Kinder Morgan that were working on that CB1 well at the time, told Eric he needed to leave, uh, the area because there was so mu- much methane coming out of that CB1 well, that they were afraid the heat from his tractor engine would cause an explosion. We know there's methane comes out of that CB1 well, and it's going to be attached to the pipeline.
No, but, I, nothing was ever relayed in, to that effect, Eric White. Um, and to my knowledge, it, it doesn't produce methane. There is no methane produced.
One more up? Kinder and Wood.
Yeah, personal, yes.
I was just going to say the McCammo gas is 98.6% CO2. A little less than 30% hydrogen, and then two or three tenths of a percent, uh, methane. So, yes, the, the wells do have a trace of that methane, but it's in that couple of tenths of a percent.
So you guys don't bleed that off or would, if you're closing right in your compressor and, and, so what would, if, what Galen reported as Mary White is true, what would it, how would, that could actually-
Well, when, when we drill the wells, we do drill through the paradox salts and, and shales, and there is some high percentage of natural gas, H2S, and so when we drill through that and we get our casing, and then we're isolated from that, but, um, other than that, we're not exposed to any high percentages of natural gas, it's just during that period. You know, we do take precautions when we're drilling or working on a well, we monitor it, you know.
You have to, there's H2S, brother.
And we have contingency plans for the H2S that are submitted and approved by the state as well during the drilling process.
Yeah, we know how that works. I drove through a, a plume of H2S because your contingency plan didn't work.
You might not be with us if you're very much for that.
Well, you know, they were stopping the traffic going one direction, but they failed to stop it going the other direction, and of course, I was going the other direction. So when I got to the backside, they were very close, and I was there, but I'd already got through it, so. It didn't kill me.
I were rooting for that.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to come up and comment on this high-impact permit? All right, uh, seeing no more additional comment on the public comment period, we will close the, um, public comment this time, and we'll take this back to discussion with the commissioners for approval or denial. Mr. Lambert?
I have no problem with it, sir. It's a change of rule. That first, uh, 4.2 miles of Road CC, I don't definitely have a problem. It's a problem.
Yeah.
With the construction, the 16 and, and the rest of CC and 10. But I, I have no problem.
You can tell?
Nor do I, and they've got the road agreement with Rob and all of that in place, so, uh, I would move that the high-impact number 690 and special use permit for Kinder Morgan CO2 Company on CO2 well known as CB-5 be approved?
I'll second.
Uh, with that motion, do we-
Excuse me, excuse me, let me add to that motion. We're inclusive in that motion. All local, state, and federal permits are obtained. Original surface agree, service use agreement is in place. COGC Regulations Rule Number 802 and CRS Colorado Advice Statutes 2512-101 are complied with regarding noise and road use agreement, which we have in place regarding the 2017 truck route is executed by the county and local superintendent and Kinder Morgan.
I'll, I'll second to you, Lieutenant.
All right, there's been a motion and a second to approve the high-impact permit number 69 and special use permit, with the added amendments of all local, state, and federal permits are obtained, the original surface use agreement is in place, and the COGCC Regulations Rule 802, CRS 25-12-101 are complied with regarding noise and the road use agreements regarding the 2017 road truck route is executed by the County Road Superintendent and Kinder Morgan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against, social carries? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We will close the public comment period at this time. We have a review and a determination of an exemption application by Vista Limited, Limited LLC.
Did John get one? He had a topic of road use.
No.
Yeah, I had one. Okay.
Did you cover that?
Yeah, I did. In the light and every- Do we want the applicant to come up now? They're here. I don't know.
Yeah, come on up, come on up.
This is my mom, Mary Ann Ock, to the general partner of this business.
I know you.
How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Larry Ock.
Very nice to meet you, Tina Ockel. Lovely to see you.
So basically, um, the applicants are proposing to better reflect the, the current usage of the property. Um, they are going to vacate the exemption that created, or the resolution that created this tract here, which is approximately 23 acres, I believe. And, um, they're going to, will have a new resolution for this 10-acre tract right here. So this, they're not creating, they're just going to add this one to, to the, this big chunk of land right here.
So they're going to put it back how it originally was, basically?
Well-
Minus this 10-acre piece.
The 22-acre was located where it is because of a realignment of Highway 160. So, um, when that was acquired in the eighties, the, the, applied for exemption on that rule was like neither the seller nor the buyer, uh, created that 10 acres. Since that time, would, the 10-acre area that we're looking to has been used for first gravel pit, uh, on the Forest Service Road and on Highway 160, and subsequent to that, my brother has run a sawmill there since the seventies, late seventies. The rest of it, we just lease out for grazing. So what we're kind of looking to do for the county assessor and for our insurance, uh, deal and for lease arrangements is just, as she said, vacate the original resolution and, and get a new exemption on that, so there would be, uh, it would remain at two parcels. Uh, we're not creating a new parcel, just a different location of one, and the ownership is going to stay the same, you know, stay in the family. It just makes things a little easier for us businesses.
You still function the gravel pit?
No, no, the gravel pit was shut, uh, shut down in 78, and that's when Woody put a sawmill there, oh, 79. And I think everything else is in your materials there. Uh, we've got recognition from the Forest Service on access to the property on 316. We have a well that's, uh, from a bureau that, that runs and operates for domestic water. And I don't know if Empire Electric ever sent in what Leanne wanted, but, but asked him to. He runs off of solar and wind. He's been off the grid since he put the place in there.
Was there a decision by the Planning and Zoning Board where to make, does this go through that one? It's a exempt application?
No.
No, okay.
This is just preliminary approval, um, so that they can move forward if, if you, so allow them to move forward with the survey and, um, I don't have to, I don't have their blessing.
Commissioners, discussion? How do you feel about this proposal?
Looks like a natural to me. I mean, just undoing something that was done back, yeah, road alignment didn't pan out the way they thought, and you're putting it back to a, to a, back to your property.
I would, I would say that the commissioners are in agreement to move forward.
Okay, so then I guess the process of, we get a survey, prepare a plaque, bring it in next, you know, when you get a survey, and you guys look at it then.
Vacate the previous resolution and create a new one.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
It's all that simple.
All right, and I believe we have a final plat for the Makas Hill subdivision.
This one has been in the works for quite a while. And we finally, finally got the approval from the water company and everyone else.
Everybody.
My happy blue pen?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, what time was she gonna have breakfast?
Two, is what I told her.
Thank you.
Do you want me to shoot her an email?
Yeah, shoot her enough time we're ready, 'cause we're running a little bit into thirty. Chris is gonna be here two oh five. All right, we're gonna throw something, uh, in addition to the agenda. It's just, there was a letter. Leslie Bugs, our Mozzamara County Assessor, has got some. Well, she wants authority from the County Board of Equalization to temporarily adjust the residential agricultural and commercial values back to one one two thousand and seventeen.
So. And then she's asking to review all the values for residential agricultural and commercial and later send out new notices of valuation to taxpayers. You all have the authority to do that and you're the, you have to actually direct her to do that or she can't do that. But when people get their new notices of valuation, if they then dispute them, they need a mechanism to be able to dispute them. And so I'm not positive they can still come to you. I'll find out for sure, but I think that they're only allowed to come to the Board of Equalization during these certain dates that are already set up by statute, which are mid-July.
They come and gone.
Right. Well, they haven't come and gone yet. By the time this is done, they'll be coming and gone. And so I think what we do, this has been done in the past by other counties and it's been reviewed by courts and been okayed. I think what they've done is they, when they send out notices, they give people also notice that if they dispute this, they have the right to appeal, but I think it goes directly to the Board of Assessment Appeals in Denver. And so, um, I wanna be sure about that. And I don't have to necessarily know right now. But that's probably the mechanism if they disagree with.
Are they coming to the Board of Equalization here? They go directly to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals in Denver?
If they dispute it, when they get their evaluations.
You mean with this new date?
Sorry, that's it again.
A new date with this sending back about valuations that were generated in two thousand and seventeen?
I think that that is potentially gonna be temporary is what she's asking for. So that she can review everything and see what, if any discrepancies there are. She's convinced that there are some inaccuracies that already were mailed out. And so for now, she just wants to set it back to, you know, what it was at the end of two thousand and sixteen, what the values were.
So is that the point then when she mails out the new newborns after review, review, then the appeals process goes to Denver instead of coming here?
Yes, that's, that's, that's what I want to suggest, right?
So, and, and that would mean that if you appealed your taxes, you'd have to go and clear to Denver?
Perhaps. If I'm right, that that's the mechanism and they can at that point not appeal to the VOCC, to you all, 'cause you all happen to be in this county, the Board of Equalization is not like that everywhere, but in most counties our size you are. The VOCC is. I think you're right. But, I mean, with the caveat of, I think often they'll allow people to appear by following those things if they want to. And I'm not even a hundred percent sure that that's what the procedure is. I just think that that's what it is. Because I don't think you all can open up a new time.
We're actually discussing this.
Good afternoon, Leslie.
Good afternoon.
One of the things that, that the county attorney was saying, Mr. Baxter, was is that if we reset this back to two thousand and.
Beginning of the year, basically.
Beginning of the year. And then they would have to, if somebody wants to appeal what the assessment is, they would, they'd have to appeal it in Denver?
So basically, the way I understood how it's been explained to me is we had our chance. We did our protest period and everything and it went the way it went. And now you guys are basically saying the values that I'm going to produce at the end of August, beginning of September will be the values that you're supporting. So it'd be like the CBOE values. So then their next, unless we wanted to do, and the guy from the state did say we could do like a special session, that would be up to you guys.
Oh, we could do a special session.
We could do. There's nowhere in the law that states we can't or that we have to.
But that's been done before?
He said it hasn't been done before, but it doesn't say we can't.
So I'd look into that. I mean, that's why I said I wasn't positive, but I just didn't know.
But it would need to be a date to date, so there's no overlapping and it needs to be specific.
So I should look into that. And if, I mean, maybe we won't have any. Maybe people will be happy after, after they get their new valuations, or maybe there won't even be changes, who knows? But if there are people that have problems with it and they want to appeal, I think we probably want to consider having a special session here rather than making them go up to Denver.
Yeah, and just do like a couple days of.
Right, so maybe I wasn't right.
Well, no, but it had been explained that way to me too. And then when we were talking last week, he said, you know, we looked into it and there wasn't anything that said you couldn't.
Right. I mean, I should assess that and decide whether or not we can't. But, um, but that sounds, sounds good to me.
But the court case we are using went straight to BOE, law binding arbitration.
Right.
They didn't have their own special session, but it was just a one account instance, not a whole county.
In effect, setting this back to January one is gonna put us back to the same valuation, the two thousand and fifteen valuation, right?
Um, no. That will set us back to after we had to manually convert from Realware to Tyler. We can't get those Realware values back. So we had to manually go in and convert as close to we could as the values that came over from Realware. So within probably two or three hundred dollars values of what they were in fifteen per account.
So it's not, not a major?
No, nope. So basically, what we have to do in our software is just go back and take out what was done for the reevaluation and just let it recalculate itself and then that'll put us back to January. Just pull out the, the numbers that they messed with.
What is your gut feeling? How many people are gonna be satisfied with?
Um, I think it's gonna kind of be, 'cause I see some going down and some going up because it wasn't a fair, you know, the valuations weren't fairly done. It was just the biggest neighborhoods were taken and revalued. So there's maybe neighborhoods out in the county that needed to be looked at and maybe, you know, their value raised that didn't get that. So it's gonna kind of even things out too. So there'll probably be some people that are upset. But that's, you know, I mean, it's the only way to make it fair. It has to be fair.
So if we take action on this today, you're very confident that they will have a, we can have a special session if there is people that contest their taxes?
And it'd have to be done by when?
We'd have to set up, pick those dates.
I'm shooting, well, I would like to have my part in my office done by the twenty-fifth of August because I have to send out pre-certification letters to all the entities. And I've kinda, kinda got, you know, that stuff to get going. So I would like to have our stuff done by then. Notices could go out in September and, you know, I mean, then we'd have till December to get everything figured out. Um, I know that the auditors meet with, um, the state fifteenth of September. So I'd like to have all of our numbers finalized by then, but if not, they know we're in a special circumstance, so.
But that's what we're shooting for.
So it sounds like, um, it would help you get things lined out that, that are messed up. And, and at the same time, we're not hurting our constituents' ability to, to protest if they still feel that it's unjust.
Correct.
Well, with the County Board of Equalization in, in session, one of you commissioners?
You know, I should, uh, get you all, we could just do this by, by motion, but, um, I started to put together a resolution, I think, that will just basically spell that out, which, which is, acknowledges your authority under the statute to, to do this and orders the assessor or respectfully requests that the assessor, I mean, she has to by law get the direction from you.
You just have to give me some time?
To conduct a revaluation and basically equalize the property values and send out new valuations.
So if, if it's done next week, are we okay?
Yeah, let's do the resolution. I'll give you the resolution. Can I give them the resolution next week?
Is that enough time for you?
I'm already starting, I'm working, so, yeah.
Okay.
Have a resolution.
Yeah, yeah, I'll have it.
I'm gonna try to, um, get with the, the people who printed out our postcards because this is gonna be a different notice too. It's gonna actually have the Board of County Commissioners name on it, the value. So it's not gonna come from the assessor's office, but I'm gonna see if I can get them a special form if they print on it. So, you know, not to have to in-house print twenty thousand accounts. Let's see what that's gonna cost.
So before it's had the assessors and then, and now you want it to have the Board of?
It's, it has to have the Board of Equalization, you know, that you guys are sending it to the taxpayers because these are gonna be your values. And then, but rather than trying to print that in-house, I mean, that'd take another month just to get that done. So see if they would give me a quote on what it would cost if I provided them with the template, how much they would charge to print it out.
Have you tried Southwest Printing here locally?
I have not, no.
I would try them because they have a million dollar printer sitting down there and they are very reasonable.
Okay.
And we probably also need to send, I'm guessing, notices out telling them what our, what their appellate rights are gonna be if they do have any disputes, so.
Yeah, we'll need to.
Let's get together on that.
Yeah, and on that form exactly, it'll say you can meet with the CBOE these dates and then VAA and, you know, it'll have to definitely be outlined for them to give them all their timeframes to keep them, you know, able to do their stuff that they need to do.
And he has the mailing capability and all that, so have a check.
Okay, absolutely, I'll check. Yeah. And it's sometimes it's easier to do when you're closer. You can just run down and say, no, that's not right.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll, we'll be nice.
We'll do as soon as we possibly can.
So they'll order me with a smile. All righty, well, thanks, guys.
Okay. There's gonna be a possible change in our agenda. We have on their proposed financial audit presentation. But we're gonna ask a question of Mr. Majors. Are we doing okay? All right, then we will go ahead and continue with the financial audit presentation with Chris Majors.
I thought I was done.
It's not nice to ask you back when you're in the back of the room, is it?
Yeah.
I'll just give you a thumbs up.
All right. I feel almost terrible with Melissa being here to ride, ride herd on you with this today.
Well, it's good.
But I think you and her had got along pretty good with this deal.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's, there's no issues whatsoever.
Do you guys even want these?
Yeah, I do.
Cost allocation plans? Okay, I made you copies. There they are. I'm not gonna spend any time on them. I'll get with Melissa and get them to the proper people. Here's the audit. How much detail?
Just what stands out for you then?
A real good overview from our auditor and help. You know, everything was, is good. It, financially, Melissa's got everything in, in good order. Just to refresh your memory, if we skipped page fourteen. You know, I'm just gonna back up here just so you guys. I'm gonna go through real fast just format wise. Page one and two, that's the letter says everything's fine. We did audit. If we didn't catch anything, it's not our fault. It was you.
I like that.
Then who comes up, it's not our fault.
Three through thirteen is all based, remember, if you read that, it's based on accounting for the county as if it was a private business. So it's got depreciation, all that. So it's kinda, I don't know how many for this, but it's based on that.
We don't do depreciation and stuff.
No, no. And the only place you do is on page fourteen and fifteen. Fourteen being your quote-quote balance sheet. Now known as a statement of net position. That includes all your capital assets with depreciation on them and includes all your debt. Your only debt being your capital leases and vacation time. I'm gonna spend a whole lot of time there. The next page is that kinda weird looking income statement. Once again, done as if you're a private business. You'll look down the first column, governmental activities. That is, God, this is even gonna get weirder. At the back parts of the audit, the ones that you'll look at, the fleet fund is done like the landfill. Like it's a business.
It's an enterprise, yeah.
Yeah, it's not. It's an internal service fund, but it's, all the internal service fund isn't, is an enterprise fund whose only customer is the county.
Right.
So it's done that way. When you roll it into here, it becomes a governmental fund, so it's not an enterprise. It doesn't make a lot of difference. But, excuse me, that governmental activities column, you'll see down there it says changes in net position. That would be your net income for the year, four point six million. Next column over, of course, there's business type. That is only the landfill. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time there 'cause it's just, it's kinda misleading because it's not done the way you guys do it. From here back, everything's done your normal way. So if we skip. No, no attorney.
Boy just can't see this.
No, 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 no.
That's enough if he leaves the building.
This is, this is way too concrete for an attorney. Page sixteen would be your balance sheet without your capital assets and debt. Just, just your normal way of doing things. You'll see it's got all the funds here. That other governmental funds column, there's more detail in the back. That's all the smaller funds combined, conservation trust, revolving loan, all that. Reconciliation at the bottom between your equity or fund balance, as if you're a private business, and the way it's done here.
Cancer treatments, is that?
Cancer treatments, is that, what is that? That is an ormiston fund.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's an ormiston. Um, one change here, and I'm glad you brought that up, but I don't know, I forgot it. This is purely an accounting deal, but here four or five years ago, they got real specific, your Roden Bridge Fund, uh, social services, some of your smaller funds, conservation trust, or what they call special revenue funds, those are funds in which the source of the revenue is, is allocated to a specific purpose, like Roden Bridge, you've got its own mill levy, it goes with roads, bridges, things like that. They changed that, and now we, if you look down there under fund balance, it says restricted, and you've got your Tabor, your cancer treatments that Larry Don saw. Notice Rhodes and, Roden Bridge's fund balance is now restricted. Doesn't mean any restriction on you guys, it just means that that fund balance couldn't be used for anything else.
For anything else.
Yeah, it, you know, being ten of the mill levy or your highway users. Same thing if you look over one column, social services, public health and welfare.
Oh, you're back on your?
16.
Gotcha.
Sorry, it, it's purely the way it's shown on the audit, I just wanted to make you aware of that, if you start seeing that restriction, no, but it is. Um, the next page is your income statement. Let's not spend any time on that one, 'cause I'd rather do the budget to actual ones at the back, but that's a summary there. Um, 18's reconciliation, that 4.6 million net income, I told you before, your quote-quote net income for the county as a whole, under your budget basis of doing things, is that top line at 1.6, so, no problem there. 19 is, now you'll see, there's the fleet fund and landfill, both treated as if they were private businesses.
Mm-hmm.
Next page is the income statement, same way, you'll see that the, uh, landfill lost 31,000.
Mm-hmm.
Fleet Fund had an $862,000 profit. Don't pay any attention to that.
That profit is what we owe them, right?
That's our startup money.
No, no, no.
No, that's outside of the, uh?
That's out, but if you go up two lines here, that says capital contributions, there's a million and 13,000.
Oh, is that from the individual departments?
That is the way that you have to account for the transfer, what we did is we took off of the depreciation schedule for the first part of the audit.
Mm-hmm.
The, the book value, the undepreciated balance of all of those vehicles.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
That came from Roden Bridge, it came from administration, that total book value is the million.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the, if you wanna go back a page, um, you'll see that startup money, that $2 million is shown as a liability.
There you go.
So it's, it's kinda funny, you know, your, your truer number there, if you go up, income loss before capital contributions and transfers.
169.
149,000 of the loss, yeah.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, and I wouldn't get real worried about that, 'cause if you move up a little, look at your depreciation numbers, 260,000.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, that's not a cash loss, it's a, um.
It's an accounting figure.
Yeah.
Yeah, trying, trying to account for the decrease in value of your assets. Um, if you go to 21 is a cash flow statement, that kinda shows you cash in, cash out for both those funds. So, I'm not sure how meaningful that is, but it's required. Okay, next page's that agency fund, all that agency fund is, is the total of the money held by the county treasurer for the school districts, the special districts, all that, that's the only place it shows up.
D W C D.
If everybody's non-county. Um, 23 through 41 are the footnotes, um, standard boilerplate supporting verbiage. Might have you skip 241. This is the only ding, if you will, on audit, it, it's gonna happen in some fashion. You overspent your budget in Roden Bridge, Conservation Trust, and the landfill. So the state will send you a letter and say, naughty, naughty, you overspent your budget, that's the end of it.
Mm-hmm.
And we can look at that in more detail as we go back, but, um, if you wanna spend much time on the audit, probably be from 43 on back, these are the, your own personal time, I won't spend a whole bunch of time on it. Um, 43 through 45 is your general fund, budget to actual. Um, skipping to 45, general fund had a, a loss, under there, it's a very wordy excess deficit of revenues and other financing sources, that, that line, 860,000, 827 dollars. That, that's not a big deal because you had that $3 million transfer out.
Oh, for the courthouse.
Courthouse, yeah, yep. And, you know, your, your ending fund balance is still 13, almost 14 million dollars, 13.9, or 79. So I, I, that, that's no concern whatsoever. Your, your total expenditures are 12,003,11, so if you wanted to use your old, kinda, and there's no scientific basis, rule of thumb, six months expenditures, you're double out, you're a little unbalanced, so.
Pretty good, that is good.
No problem there. Um, Roden Bridge, next page, it lost 54,884, third line up on the bottom. Uh, you overspent your budget there, you'll see, by 317,000. The next page is social services, I'm not going to, that's just, I don't stay in it all.
Yeah, on the Roden Bridge, that's, I'm trying to remember, we did a lot more projects, didn't we?
And it's, it's lumped funny here, it's split in weird categories, so it's hard for me to say, and I didn't pack all my notebooks down, I looked at it, Melissa's got it, she'll know exactly what, what it's about.
We discussed this last year.
Road to, yeah, that chip seal that we're gonna go out and CC is most of it, I think.
You know, and I, maybe this is as good a time as any to talk about this, talk to Melissa about it. I think it's been traditional over many years in the past at the county to start modifying the budget, you know, okay, I didn't spend all my supplies, so I would like to do an amended budget and move some money to utilities or whatever. In my mind, your budget, you only have a violation of your budget statute if the total expenditures for that fund exceed the total appropriation for the bottom. So the, the total, it's total expenditure.
Mm-hmm.
So, the only supplemental I would really worry about doing, and Melissa's got a good enough finance system in place now, you know, along about November, if you say, oh God, we got a bunch of money and we didn't think we were gonna get it, we spent it, or we had some unforeseen circumstance, we had to spend a bunch, we're gonna overspend our budget in Roden Bridge. Then you do a supplemental to appropriate that additional amount of money to cover you in total. I'm not sure I would waste your time and all the, all the confusion to amend the budget if I come in and say, well, I didn't, it doesn't matter.
Right, right.
And I, I almost think it's misleading, 'cause it, you know, it's what a budget's designed for, is to kinda see how good your forecast is.
Your best guess.
Yeah, so if it's, say it's my department, I do my budget and I say, okay, I'm gonna budget 10,000 for supplies and $5,000 for fuel. At the end of the year, I really spent 30,000 on fuel and 2,000 on supplies. I think it's a better management tool to have that, there's no violation of any.
Shows you what you really did.
Yeah, versus if I come in and I budget it here, and then I come in and say, you know what, guys, I wanna move this money, you don't have to redo the budget to move the money. Does that make sense?
Yeah, as long as, like you say, you don't exceed what your.
For that fund in total.
And so you're just not even doing that, then?
Well, or, they can come in and tell us, you know, like, like Rob, and a good example, well, a good example of that's a landfill when the, when the cat broke down. You know, Shaq had to come in and say, hey, I've got a $150,000 repair bill on this cat for the landfill, and it's gonna throw my budget out of whack, so we said.
Now, there's probably a good situation that you're probably big enough, I'm speaking more just kinda the smaller.
Smaller stuff, okay.
You know, where they're saying, okay, I've still got money in my operating supplies account, so I wanna spend this money out of that budget item and not, not, uh.
Didn't you discuss this with Melissa?
Yeah, I did, I did.
What was her response?
I, I think she's in agreement, but.
Because like you said, at the end of the year, then you see you haven't gotten and manipulated your budget to change your budget, it shows where you actually spent your money and where you didn't spend your money, which will give you hopefully a better idea about budget.
You know, and you spotted a trend there, okay, we overspent supplies five years.
Yeah, like a planning and zoning.
First if we keep adjusting to it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And it's just gonna save you guys a bunch of headache, and I think that may be what you're kinda missing sometimes, that you're missing the fund in total.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the only other thing I would think would trigger a supplemental budget at that point would be a grant.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody applies for a, a $500,000 grant. Grant, you didn't anticipate the time the budget gets awarded, then you probably wanna do one to appropriate the money just in that grant.
Sure, sure.
It might clean thing, and I don't care if you don't wanna do it, it's just something kinda popped up in Melissa's conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, that's Roden.
You can cur on that and think that's the best way to go, I think he'll probably.
She's not here to defend herself. She's in complete agreement with me.
On every item.
On every item.
On every item.
Um, page 50 is a combining balance sheet, these are all those small funds that are lumped together up front.
Mm-hmm.
And just for your information, if you even care, the criteria for being split out separate is they have to exceed 10% of county totals in either assets, liabilities, revenues, or expenditure. If they're under that, then they just get lumped.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just all the, all the little stuff, nothing there. Uh, next one is a combined income statement. You'll see that all of those, not all of them, let's see. All of them except Rogers Tax actually had a profit, if you wanna call it that, Rogers Tax had transferred out a little more than it took in, but.
Mm-hmm.
No problem there.
Mm-hmm.
Ah, okay, and then from 52 through 64, those are your budget to actual, free to one of those small funds, if you care to look at.
That, Rogers Tax was, I'm trying to remember what happened there, did, did one of the Chamber of Commerce spend more money than they were supposed to?
Look here, it's on page.
I think somebody over there.
You're, you were actually right on. Your expenditures, you budgeted 148, you, you transferred out of 147,9, your revenue, your revenue may have been a little bit less than.
Could have been.
Well, you only anticipated 100, but that's probably being real conservative.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a big deal, my guy just still got plenty of fund balance, so. You don't have to make money on every fund every year.
No.
I don't think you, you know, you've gotta balance, balance where you're at.
Mm-hmm.
We had that 65?
65, clear back through, 74 is all the stuff you have to do because you have federal money, which all social services stuff. Just two more boilerplate letters. Um, page 70, might be of some interest, might not be, that is the total federal money received by the county, except for they finally changed, maybe there is hope in this world, they finally came in and said food stamps are not revenue to you anymore. So.
Wow.
You know how I used to, I, I would always complain because.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, money runs you accounting.
No, it's not.
There's a little bit of administration in that, so.
Right.
So they finally made that change for purposes of this schedule.
Yeah. Cause that'd be like, what, three and a half, four million bucks?
Oh, no, it's an excess of five million.
Yeah, like 600,000.
Here, here.
It's more than that, it's 600,000 a month, I thought.
It shows up still on page 40 something.
Average.
I suppose.
Some might be.
Like 7.2.
Page 47, if you go, last year was.
Five, six.
Five.
Food assistance?
Yeah, 57, 99, 40,000.
So it's, it's five.
5.89.
5.8.
It wasn't very many years ago, it was about, it was average about 2, 2.3. And you know that, you know what froze me? Josiah had a state official with human services come down, they surveyed management of the county and said that he was only servicing half of the people that were eligible for food stamps.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Now you tell me.
I think there was a, it wasn't even a state guy, it was a, it was from some organization.
Oh, was it? I thought, okay, maybe, I thought it was a.
I thought it was Hicken River, one.
Health and Human Services person, but whomever it was, whatever it was, said we were underserving by 50% of us.
Well, I know, several years ago, they, they changed those requirements to where they no longer look at your assets, they only look at.
Strictly income.
What's your tax return.
Tax, yeah.
So it doesn't matter, you don't wanna play with your depreciation.
You, you can make it look however you want it to, make it fit.
Yeah, yep. Uh, page 75, 76, that's that highway report, that's already been electronically submitted, they require a copy of it to be in there. That's a very brief summary, but it all looks, it all looks good.
How many counties do you do, do you do?
Just the two, just Little Sharon County, yeah, do quite a few more towns and schools, but two's about all I can handle.
Two's all you wanna bite on?
Yeah, God, we started first May.
No kidding, that's right.
That's the end of May, takes a long time to do a county, takes a long time to do a county.
Man, yeah.
Do you think we're doing okay then?
Oh, yeah, there, there's no, the only thing I could even drag up to point out would be that budget stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that's nothing wrong, that was just.
And that's gonna be a choice, a choice of how we wanna.
Yeah, that's merely, merely a suggestion.
Yeah.
To use your paperwork, burden, burden. I need to, oh, I've got Larry going. This letter, both of these are standard at the end of the audit, it basically says you gave us everything.
Withholding nothing.
And it spells out, once again, that if there is a problem, it is your fault.
Our fault. I wouldn't sign that.
I know, this is like Todd when it's sure.
If there is a mistake, it's on you.
They're shirning you against, and then.
All right, then it gets east to Melissa to sign. There goes Melissa.
Doesn't matter which side I sign on?
No, it's very different. Melissa will sign one spot and you'll sign the other. And I didn't make a bunch of copies, I didn't, I'll get this to Melissa. And I didn't make a bunch of copies. I didn't, I'll get this to Melissa to mail in. This is the landfill certification. It's just a letter that says you met the tests on the landfill. I'll get that to her then.
Get that done and sent in?
Yep. And that should be everything. It's John's letter.
Do we post this online? I think we do, right?
Yes. That's the deal that we gave you theoretically before now.
Oh, gosh, these are, you wanna know?
I know you love those.
Yeah.
At some point, it was handy.
Okay, I'll do it again. I'll pull up my old one and update it. Are you gonna give these to-
Yeah, I've got some other stuff.
Okay. Are you gonna go to that drought contingency meeting tonight?
Oh, that is-
You know anything about that?
No, you got time to give me it. Where are you going to do it?
Well, no, we just, I would have concerns if I had water in my county.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
It sounds like it. Were they thinking of catching everything at the head of the canyon? Is that too bad? Yeah, they're talking, they've got several different scenarios. They're talking about making it into a Class B structure and then-
Making you buy it?
Making you buy some shares and I, I'm not, I don't, I shouldn't speak on it, but-
And I'll just give you my personal situation, get your opinion. The Rock Creek ditch is number one on the Kell, which is where my water comes from. So would that priority not protect?
I don't know.
I don't either. I tell you, they're trying to throw those priorities. I don't say, there's discussion. I don't wanna say they are, there is discussion about, everything is open for interpretation of what has been. It's weird.
And the driving force is DWCD or?
I think primarily, yeah, cause they're the ones that came up with the drought contingency plan. I think between, they share that a bit with MBI, but I think it's more out of DWCD.
Cause they don't have any priority at all on any of that water, outside of the-
Project water.
Yeah.
And on the project water, I don't think either project water goes down McCallum.
No, it's all MBI.
Yeah.
Yeah, project, project goes you, not to-
Oh, that's true, that's-
Yeah, nothing would go to you. I mean, project water would not go, it would turn in, it's MBI, right?
Yeah.
MBI wastewater.
MBI wastewater, so it drives McCallum after the runoff.
Yeah.
So I guess, yeah, if MBI caught their-
Well, there was a, they're talking about, I see, they're talking about being able to measure the wastewater of every user up here in the MBI system, which kind of, I don't know how you do that. That was a scenario.
See, they, they tried that in McCallum here about four or five years ago. I get a letter from the division engineer saying you will install a measuring device on all your wastewater ditches returning to the grid. And I smelled that trap coming from a mile away, cause they're gonna say, oh, you're not using all your water. So I sent it up to the water attorney, we use Colorado Springs. I won't say what he told me to tell him in a public meeting. And it just went away. But I'd be scared to death starting measuring wastewater, even if I was MBI.
My opinion is, is they should leave the damn thing alone. It's worked for a hundred years.
I agree one hundred percent.
And it's working for everybody, and all you're gonna do is start causing neighbor against neighbor.
And if they catch it, what are they gonna do?
Fight it.
It's sitting at the bottom end of the county.
I don't know, it's just, it's ridiculous.
It's all getting, that downstream flow will-
Mm-hmm.
Driving insane.
It's all about getting more water down to the worst.
It is.
It's all about that.
Where is it at?
At the DWCD office, at seven, right?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioners, do you have anything else for Mr. Majors?
I trust him, if he says we're in good shape, I believe.
Can I ask you a question? On page seventy, you said that, and I, I mentioned, I suppose it's your end of term line, but maybe it's something you could say something about now. But the total federal money is that's come into the county except for food stamps. What proportion, percentage that-
Of that to the total county revenue?
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Oh, I could actually tell you that.
So it's three-point-five million?
Three-point-five, total county revenue would be... It's the page. It's just a hair under ten percent, I believe, but.
Was it about forty-six million or was it?
Total county revenue is roughly forty million dollars.
So it would be less than ten.
Eight percent.
If you throw food stamps into there, it would be, if everything's gonna kind of be proportional, then your total revenue would go up.
Yeah.
So it's a little less than ten. And of that, um...
If you exclude social, social programs, if you go social services type money-
You can add up the government.
Yes, the county total federal money is roughly two hundred thousand dollars.
Feds ain't supporting us, are they?
That would not include kilt. You'd add your kilt. Like, here's, here's real quick, take two seconds. Sheriff's Office gets a judge advocate general grant for a hundred and eight thousand, a bulletproof vest grant for nineteen hundred and sixty-eight dollars. There's medium S grant, federal portions thirty-five thousand, and that rural school portion money is fifty thousand. That's all the federal money the county gets.
What about the DA's office? Do they get any?
We're gonna do DA's-
Oh, he does its separate audit.
Yeah, that's that twenty-second, you just-
I think they get some too.
Yeah.
Whatever that's worth.
So it's, there's, and what your kilt money is, uh, about a million-three, a million-one, something.
But if it was, well-
Kilt? Oh, no, kilt's a hundred and seventy-five.
Well, that's because our federal mineral leasing offsets it. It's offset, it offsets federal mineral leasing.
Okay. Cause a mineral leasing is actually state money.
Yes.
Rather than fed?
Yes.
In a mineral leasing state.
But it's still, there's still an offset there.
Oh, yeah, that it would go up, yeah. If, if you just like the hard dollars, true, you know, just coming from the feds is three hundred and seventy-five thousand including them. So, yeah, they're, they're not carrying the county money straight.
No, people are paying much more in taxes than that.
What's that?
To the US. I mean, a lot more of your dollar goes to the US than that, obviously.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
Real well appreciated.
Do you guys want to do the assessment resolution right now?
Of course.
It's, it's ready, if you want to do it. I can read it, and since we don't have it to show everybody.
Why don't you read it and then we'll finish it?
It's Resolution Eight of twenty-seventeen. I hope, I hope this isn't our third eight, but Kim tells me it's eight. Temporary adjustment of residential agricultural and commercial values to January first, twenty-seventeen. Whereas pursuant to Colorado Vice Statute thirty-nine-eight-one-oh-two subsection one, the Monizuma County Board of Commissioners has authority and obligation to correct any errors made by the assessor, and whereas whenever in the judgment of the Board of County Commissioners' justice and rights so require, the Board of County Commissioners shall raise, lower, or adjust any valuation for assessment appearing in the assessment roll to the end, that all valuations for assessment of property are just and equalized within the county. And I got that just from the language of the statute. And the Monizuma County Assessor reports that notices evaluation for twenty-seventeen residential agricultural and commercial properties contain discrepancies and inaccuracies. The BOCC acknowledges the existence of disparity in values and the necessity of readjustment. Therefore, be it resolved by the Monizuma County Board of Commissioners, the following: In order to equalize the property values with compatible properties and reflect correct values, as beginning, the assessor should adjust values to the January first, twenty-seventeen valuations. The Monizuma County Assessor should conduct a revaluation and correct all values based upon market and/or other assessment methodologies, and the assessor should conduct this revaluation as soon as possible. That's it.
Is it, is it the Board of Commissioners or is it the-
It's the Board of Equalization, which is the BOCC in here.
So it doesn't matter?
Yeah. I mean, you all are the BOE. BOCC is the BOE. But that's a good question. Maybe I should have put slash BOE in here, but it, you're fine. It's the BOCC.
I would move that Resolution Number Eight dash twenty-seventeen, temporary adjustment of residential agricultural and commercial values back to January first of twenty-seventeen, be approved second.
Motion is second to approve Resolution Number Eight dash two thousand seventeen, temporary adjustment of residential agricultural and commercial values to January first, two thousand and seventeen. All those in favor, Commissioners?
Aye.
Aye.
So. You can make a line for you too.
We need to approve the audit today.
I think last time, last year, I think he made a presentation, and then she came back and presented it to you guys for approval.
Okay.
That's what you guys did last week.
Melissa did it after that.
All right.
Okay, let's do it next week.
Melissa do that.
Oh, wait. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I got confused on which direction I was supposed to go.
That's left-handed, but if you go left.
Yeah.
It's just Kim now. Kim, can you date it for us, please?
Sure.
Oh, okay, yeah, come on, come on, Doug.
Yeah, P point two on the Hewitt Lake. Just did a bit more research. I haven't heard back from, from, from Rob yet. So let me just provide this to you, so you can look it over before. Because I will have this as kind of an add-on for the road, official roadmap discussion next week, and we can decide to take action on it, or if we prefer that. Basically, what I found, I found a newspaper article that describes how this began kind of the hot topic here around two thousand. But what happened in, in nineteen sixty-five is the Division of Wildlife got an easement to build what's, I think, an undeveloped campground there at the end of that P point two, as it heads east to the west side of Hewitt Reservoir there. And they also got access to that from the property owner. So obviously, the intent was for it to be developed as a recreational facility at that time. There's also discussion in that book and page saying, both parties, and the second part will attempt to obtain agreement with the Monizuma County Commissioners for the purpose of maintaining a road. So there's a long history of this section of road being talked about, you know, access, who's gonna maintain it. And then what happened in nineteen ninety-eight is the Division of Wildlife improved the road and the boat ramp there. And, and then per this article, and then, and then some other Commissioner discussions-
That was the road supervisor though, isn't it, saying that that was a county road?
Yeah, and it was on the roadmap. From nineteen, from the nineteen sixty-seven roadmap through the nineteen nineties roadmap, it was, it was shown as an unimproved county road, but it was shown as a county road. So I'm just saying, there's a lot of evidence to say that it historically had been a county road. I haven't found any evidence that it was ever abandoned as a county road. It just showed up as a, as a red sign road in the past. So, and if, you know-
So what is the status of that road right now? Is it a red road?
On our roadmaps, it's a red road, and as far as Rob knows, he's going off of it being a, a red road. I haven't heard back from him since I talked to him about it last week, but I'll make sure to get his input for the road meeting next week. I don't think they've maintained it for a while, but this is kind of why we need a bit more clarity of things coming together, because, you know, here in two thousand, it looks like the Lopezes came in in ninety-eight, talked about the access, concerned about the access, and then proceeded to block that road with a bus. And then Kurtzer came in and also got, got a lawyer involved and tried to block that, block access to that fishing access down there. So there's been some heated topics over the years, access to, you know, certainly public lands per se. They have, you know, it's Hewitt Lake, so they have, there's a lot of private landowners that go into it, but it is a private, but it is a public recreational facility with the, you know, easement up to the, and around the shoreline, and of course, easement for that area that's designated as a boat ramp and was gonna be developed as a campground. So it's been contentious things over the years. It seems to me that it might be a decent candidate to say that needs to be shown again as a, as a county road. And then, and then whatever agreements take place between the Department of Division of Wildlife and the county as far as maintenance, how it's maintained, but just wanted to do that, to look over.
Can I get a copy of that?
Sure.
I tell you what, let me give mine to-
Yeah.
Because I'm not gonna be here next week.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Doug.
Okay, thanks.
All right, at this time, we have a public comment. If anybody would like to comment to the Commissioner, could come up to the podium, state your name and address. All right, seeing none in public comment.
MB McAfee, two-two-two-seven-seven, County Road Twenty in Lewis. Laurie Dawn, I have a challenge for you. I liked it today when I heard you say that you're visiting out around other counties, and other counties seem to be doing a little bit more or differently than Monizuma County's doing. And you're gonna be back next week, where you'll be visiting with a lot of different Commissioners from a lot of different counties. So it struck me while I was having lunch today, maybe there are some themes that you could talk to other counties about to see if there are some things you can draw from your discussions that would suggest reasons that they seem to be doing better. And doing better, that has all kinds of connotations, you know, for every one of us. But some things that crossed my mind that you could ask about, or, and I don't mean to interview Commissioners or anything, but try to listen for, would be things like, do they have a recreation district? A lot of counties do have a tax-supported recreation district, and that works for some counties, might not work here, I'm not suggesting that at all. But sometimes that's one way you end up promoting recreation, you know, throughout the county in some sort of a planned way. Granted, we have to deal with archaeological sites and stuff like that that doesn't apply other counties. But also, I was thinking about, do they have a countywide sales tax? Do they have broadband with fifteen megabits or whatever the slogan is to every roof? I don't know about mega and giga and stuff, so I don't know what that word is. Are they moving toward alternative energy? Do they have far-sided planning and zoning plans? Well, I was, so I just think that there might be a lot of things that go into causing a county to be doing something differently or better, you know, than we're doing. And you have an opportunity, you're gonna be visiting with Commissioners. So I just would invite you and kind of challenge you, listen for other things that might be applicable here, possibly. That's just a thought, and I think that's something a good leader can do. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, close the public comment.